City Council Regular Meeting, may we start off with a roll call.
Councilmember Rurback?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thanks so much Jessica, and may we start off then with public forum?
Yes, I have two, three hands raised, I also have two emailed comments on a consent calendar item, so I'll read those last. Six hands raised now, so we'll start with Dorothy Dillon, Dorothy, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how many people were attending the previous, the first portion of the meeting? There was some questions and next door, we're having conversations and we wanted to know how many people attended tonight.
Uh, I guess I'll answer that, as far as I could tell Dorothy, I looked at one point, there were fifty, fifty-nine, sixty attendees from the public, and there were panelists about twenty, so there's probably about eighty people, give or take a few, and we'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Eisen, if I could add, we had about twenty people viewing on Facebook Live and then this meeting is also being broadcast on Channel 27, so there may be more viewers participating that way as well.
Excellent point, thank you so much, very good.
Dorothy, did you have any other comments?
No, it was just a question.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Ruby Salazar, Ruby, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council members of Half Moon Bay. My name is Ruby Salazar and I work with the Youth Leadership Institute, an organization that serves youth in San Mateo County, including Half Moon Bay. As a social justice organization, WILI recognizes as its core struggles the dissemination, dismantling of white supremacy wherever it appears, and we see defunding the police as a starting place toward creating safe, thriving, and self-determined communities, where we are calling for city-states and our federal government to abolish police as we currently understand it. We continue to fund an excessive, brutal, and discriminatory system of policing, and that needs to change. When we talk about defunding the police, we are talking about making a major pivot in national priorities. We are talking about putting these funds into other priorities like affordable housing, youth programs, and transportation. Now, as a community member and not a WILI member, I believe that WILI, that Half Moon Bay High School do not need to be policed by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department. They need free activities, mental health resources, and substance use and prevention services. We need to think about how policing in Half Moon Bay can be changed to include policies like those highlighted in the Yanira Serrano Presente Program. Specifically, we need to, we need a bilingual resource line that is safe and secure space where our Latino community can call to report positive interactions or abuses, interactions or abuses by authorities, as listed in the Yanira Serrano Presented Program, and that is run by a trusted organization like ALAS. Dear City Council members, I ask that the council, I ask that the council rethink funding for the police department and think about instead reallocating those funds to Half Moon Bay's priorities, including affordable housing, transportation, and our youth who are the future of Half Moon Bay. I ask that the council also adopt the Yanira Serrano Presented Program to help create a more healthy relationship with the police department in Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Ruby.
Next, we have Sue Rainieri, Sue, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. At the last meeting, you had residents speak out for almost an hour on concerns in their neighborhoods due to unmanaged visitor services. It's unimaginable that if the state and local beach lots were deemed unsafe for visitors, that it was at all safe for the neighborhoods to be overrun by guests to the coast side. You've already heard about the toll taken over Memorial Day, and sadly, very little has changed. More sadly, this is not even an agenda item tonight worthy of the council and community's time. What has changed since the last council meeting? Some state and local lots are open, and some signage has been added at Highway One directing visitors to beach parking. What has not changed? Extensive parking is still happening in residential neighborhoods. It's continuing to pose risk to pedestrians and cyclists forced into the street to navigate the neighborhood. There's still dangerous and erratic driving with little to no presence of law enforcement. People are running stop signs, speeding, parking on the wrong side of the street, blocking hydrants. There is still trash, I do not leave my house without a hefty trash bag, and every time, it comes home full. Mostly because there's no trash facility between the beach and my home. Personally, I picked up over a hundred pounds of trash, brought it back to my house. The beach parking, the trash facilities at Poplar are overfull by midday Sunday. I know all my neighbors have done the same thing. Of concern particularly in this trash is cigarette butts I'm finding on the dry grassy bluffs. I have never seen that this number of cigarette butts on the bluffs before in the thirty years I've lived here. This is a fire hazard. There's discarded toilet paper and unused face masks, and used face masks, excuse me, these are health hazards in the COVID area. Social distancing is not observed on narrow trails, very few masks are worn. Residents continue to be exposed to bio-waste on a daily basis on bluffs, beaches, and front yards. The amount of plastic bags, cups, food containers, damaging to wildlife and the environment. Even though the beaches are now open, little is improved in the residential neighborhoods. We respectfully request the city move forward to pursue residential parking in the neighborhoods west of Highway One on a temporary basis during the pandemic. COVID cases in San Mateo County are absolutely not plateauing nor declining. There were three hundred, three thousand six hundred sixty new cases reported June twelfth, which was second only to May thirtieth, at three thousand seven hundred and five cases, which was the week after Memorial Day. Whether we like it or not, lack of management of visitor services is putting the residents in harm's way on a daily basis. This will only get worse as we move through the summer, especially the Fourth of July weekend. Visitors to the coast aren't reading the signs at ninety-two, and even if they did, it's unclear where they're supposed to park. We need to open up more beach parking and let visitors know where that is, and at the same time, protect the residents during this pandemic with a temporary residential parking program. We also request that this be an agenda item on the next council meeting so that residents can be apprised of what actions the city is taking to keep residents and the environment healthy and safe. This is what we have elected you to do, please don't disappoint us.
Thank you Sue, and then Bob, do you want to talk to that real quick? Because I know we have been looking into that and been doing the research behind the scenes, and that's why we aren't really talking about it, because we've been working on it, but go ahead.
Sure, thank you Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Ms. Rainieri. Yes, it did come up at the last meeting two weeks ago, it was a directive at the end of the meeting. We received, actually, I'll address two directives we received at the end of the meeting. The first was to schedule a future meeting on beach access generally, but also more specifically about the idea of permit parking in the neighborhoods. For two reasons, we did not schedule that for this meeting. The first reason is, two weeks was just simply not enough time for us to do all the research we need to do and bring back various options and things for the council to consider to have a robust discussion about the subject. And so, we felt that we needed the five weeks that we would schedule for July twenty-first. The second reason is that this meeting turned out to be a very busy meeting. We saw that coming, that we had many other items on the agenda that we needed to attend to, and so, we felt it was right to put that on the July twenty-first calendar. That's where it is now, that's our plan, and that's our intention to schedule that meeting as a regular business item on, on that agenda. The other, I'll just bring it up now, since it came up, the other directive we received at the last meeting was to consider possibly making the use of face masks mandatory. So, we have done the research, Catherine, the city attorney can speak to it. We did the due diligence and have all the information, so if the council did choose to do that, we could bring that forward relatively quickly. We did not put it on the agenda tonight because there was some nuances to it in terms of getting out of sync with the county order, and the county now is trying to sync up with the state order, and it's already very confusing, all the different orders and what people are supposed to follow. And also, in Catherine's research, she just discovered some other things. So, we just wanted to come back to the council and let you know, we've done the research, it can be done, but we kind of thought we'd wait and hold it and make, and when we got direction at some future, you know, if the council said yes, let's proceed with it, you could give us that direction tonight, or if you wanted to hold, given how the circumstances are just so dynamic with the orders changing and what's opening, that we thought it would be best to check in with you and say, we're ready to do it if you want us to, but we can put it on hold as well.
Uh, great, thank you for answering that, and yeah, a lot of this stuff seems like it's relatively easy to do, and then there's when we get involved in it with all the legalities and, um, yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to make these things happen immediately. We appreciate you guys doing the research and getting on it, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and if we see, you know, that the things start to change in terms of what we're seeing at a national level, a state level, a local level, we'll be ready to bring that to you, given the dynamics.
Very good, very good. Kristalyn? I'm sorry, Jessica, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, Kristalyn, go ahead.
Hi, um, I just wanted to let you guys know that the Chamber, with the help of the city, in fact, it was spearheaded, or, one of your staff members, Karen Decker, had a wonderful idea a couple months ago about creating some signs for the businesses to, that when everything starts to open up, that people have a visual of what stores they can go into and that they're welcomed at. And so, the Chamber took that and ran with it and was able to get Midcoast Council, Pescadero Council, the Hotel BID, and the Chamber, and the city all to participate in this. And so, we're getting ready to launch, the coast is open for business, and we have some banners that are underway, and then the signage that will go out to the cities, or go out to the businesses, and the, the signs for the windows will be in English and in Spanish, and then we'll do some radio marketing, and we're going to do some online marketing. So, we're, as soon as we feel comfortable that it's safe to have people come back in a more quote-unquote "normal" manner, we will be ready to deploy, and we really appreciate the city's help in getting this off of the ground. Thank you.
Thank you Kristalyn. Very exciting, very exciting, thank you Kristalyn.
DS Sullivan, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to just say that I appreciate very much Mr. Nesbitt, your update for initiatives and how the council has responded to, to the comments from the last meeting. I too want to speak about the safety of our visitors and our residents. I would also reference, just as Sue has, at the last meeting, we spent so much time talking about parking and beach access. And I just have to say, I am actually really confused now about the last speaker and that the coast is open for business. It sounds like there is a lot that we're actually not ready for. July fourth is eighteen days away, it's going to be a beautiful sunny weekend, and what I would be concerned about is the same elements that we've talked about, the trash, overcrowding, the lack of masks, and it sounds like maybe some of these things are out of sync. It would be great to welcome residents, and I do appreciate that this is more complex than we can maybe do in two weeks. However, it would be nice to know what it is that we would actually do, the agenda on the July twenty-fifth, and what it is that we might need to do short-term for our residents now. Signage is absolutely something that we can do, we still have the signs from the last go-around, maybe we can repurpose those and stick those up someplace, where we also have potentially parking that we can open up for overflow lots and pointing that. What about PR? If we're going to say the coast is open, maybe we should say, and it would be nice if you brought your mask too, and if you're going to bring trash, put it in a good place. PR is a great way, and social media is a great way for us also to explain how people can enjoy the coast side and still keep our neighborhood safe. I can't say enough about how much I would really appreciate the, the thought of temporary resident parking because of my neighborhood, my kids, people zooming through the neighborhood, trying to find parking. They know where else they can park and not pay a dime. They know where else they can go for a quiet beach, and God bless them for doing that. But, that's not going to get us through day eighteen, when the city is overrun, and then your next meeting will be all about parking and safety and people being frustrated about it. So, I would, I would very much love to hear, because I know you're listening, the short-term actions that we can take between now, we've got eighteen days, eighteen days to make it clear to our guests how they can have a safe, enjoyable time on the coast side and not put the residents at, at risk. So, I would very much appreciate hearing about, about that, thank you.
I don't know if I can put you on the spot on that one, it's hard, it's hard to, Bob, I'm going to put you on the spot, so I'm going to give you a second to think about it while I, while I, but it's hard to come up with short-term solutions, just because there's so many legalities and different things we're looking at with the Coastal Commission, the laws, the shelter-in-place order, and all the different things. We hear you loud and clear, we are trying to make adjustments, and I will say, and I don't know if this helps, because what do people do, but the parking lots have been filled. We, we, the parking lots are getting the traction or the parking that we need, and we just got a picture from somebody on even Monday, and on a Monday, when it was cloudy, the parking lot was filled. And so, people are using the parking lots and paying for the parking. The big question is, what do they do once the parking lot's filled? And that's a whole nother section, but while I was buying Bob some time, Bob, can you, see if you can respond quickly to that?
Mr. Mayor and members of council and Ms. Sullivan, yeah, it is a tough one. This is something that we deal with every summer. My first summer here was last summer, and I do remember before Memorial Day, we received some complaints, rightfully so, about garbage and, and night use at the beaches, and at that time, we formed, you know, we kind of went into action and formed a kind of a summer plan that I think was successful last year. And I do believe, and I think others have said the same thing, and we're hearing this from people, not only, I guess, it's an abnormal summer, it feels like it's going to be, on the one hand, a normal summer, but it's going to be worse than a normal summer, because the feeling, people are observing more people coming here, and the phenomenon seems to be, or we're just theorizing, that it's because people have less options of, of where to go. They were obviously going stir-crazy during the time that we were in lockdown, and so, it does feel like, on the one hand, this is normal summer for Half Moon Bay, we're a tourist town, the beaches are here, and people have historically come here to visit the beaches, and they have a right to do so. But it does seem, I agree, that the numbers are up. What we can do is what we're already doing to the best of our ability. We are doing the best we can on trash collection, we have a variety of ways we do that. We use our own staff, the staff that we have to pick up trash, make trash cans available. We also, on the, on the agenda tonight is the Contract with Abundant Grace, we're recommending to keep that going. That's a good part of the solution to cleaning up the beach, and then we're also, of course, trying to strengthen our partnership with the Pacific Beach Coalition on that as well. The sheriff is going to continue doing what they're doing in terms of ticketing illegal parking, just because the first phase, I'll say, of the stay-at-home order or the pandemic is over, does not mean they're going to stop. Saul will continue to make decisions on employing overtime on the weekends as necessary so that their officers are out there, both ticketing illegal parking and also using the Polaris more on the beach, to patrol the beach. And we're also going to just have people out in general, monitoring stay-at-home orders, things like people congregating, being good stewards of the land, and so forth, to the best of our ability. So, these are the things we're already doing. I don't know if there is anything, if there's a silver bullet that can be done in the short term that is going to relieve this problem. Half Moon Bay is a beach town, we are a tourist town, and I think, you know, that is part of living here. People come here, and they're not always well behaved, and I do believe, that's the third point, the speaker was on this part, and that is the education. I do believe we're doing that to the best of our ability. Our communication department has been working overtime during the pandemic, getting messages out about the pandemic, educational messages about stay-at-home order, educational messages about wearing face masks, educational messages about being good stewards while you're here, and pack it in, pack it out, and so forth and so on. I'm, and I believe that's part of it. So, we're going to keep doing all those things, there is not another council meeting until July twenty-first. We will focus on all options, we're going to brainstorm different ideas that we've heard, but certainly the focus for that session is the idea of permit parking. And so, that, that will be the area that we put the most focus in, do the research, start to think about the, what, what neighborhoods it would apply to, how much the fee would be, just basically the construct, if we were to move that direction, so the council has those options on the twenty-first. So, we need some time to do that. We're very busy doing other things, and, and that's, that's the timeframe in which we can bring that discussion back to the council.
No, we appreciate it, and just, just so you know, Bob and I have talked about this in length. It, it, it's a rather massive undertaking, I know it seems like you can just put signs up, but there's a bunch of legal requirements, there's a bunch of, oh God, there's a bunch of payment requirements, there's a bunch of notice requirement. So, there's a lot of pieces involved, the Coastal Commission then, and all the other pieces involved, and it's quite a lengthy process to get it done, and, and actually like a couple of months is, is a major undertaking. I know that doesn't sit well for people that want to see immediate action, but we can't do it unless we take our time to do it right.
Go ahead.
You know, we live in a beach community. The neighborhoods on the west side are a stone's throw from the beach, you can walk there in less than ten minutes. The streets that you live on are public streets. So, you know, unless there's a permit program, people can park on the public streets.
So, you know, unless there's a permit program, people can park on the public streets. And we're doing the best we can to help mitigate the impacts, but it's not going to be perfect until, you know, we have a permit program. And we're not going to get it done by July 4th. The permit program is going to take some work and it's going to be probably a couple of months or more. So, but my understanding is we're going to move forward with that. But in the meantime, everybody's, it's all hands on deck. We're going to do our part, the police are going to do their part to the extent they can. And, you know, we as neighbors are going to have to play our part too. That's kind of the cost of living in a beach community, unfortunately.
You know, and then, oh, I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor, please.
Yeah, I mean, I could wait if you want to answer, then go.
No, 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 please, go.
Yeah, I'm really concerned what was brought up about, you know, what can we do short-term? What's viable? And it's not, it's not like every weekend in the summer, we have these three-day weekends. And what the heck do you do when all the parking lots are full? Then it's really not a matter of people looking for free parking. They're looking for any parking. The parking lots are full. So, and then there's the trash issue. So I think, you know, we can take a quick look at how we can, you know, can we pay for more frequent, frequent trash pickups, if that's feasible? Can we actually hire people to patrol some of the worst neighborhoods where trash is the, literally people going around with a saxon picking up trash? Can we hire some folks like that temporarily for a weekend? Would it be, I don't know, maybe Saul can chime in on this. Would it, would it be better or worse if we, you know, we have the electronic signs on the highway? And you know how you see those signs at parking lots and the city parking lot full? At some point, can we put a sign up and say, well, parking lot, you know, beach parking lots are full? And that might discourage some folks from coming in. I, I mean, just the traffic on 92 would be crazy alone on a good weekend. That might discourage enough people. But maybe we could say it'll be, you know, X number of minutes delay to get to Half Moon Bay right now based on traffic and maybe parking lots are full if they are. And, you know, I think they will get full by a certain point in, in the day. I'm throwing out some brainstorming, is it feasible, spend some more money on cleanup, garbage pickup, and whether or not we can be honest about what the parking situation's like with some signage.
Yeah, I've noticed, like on Monday, the parking lot was full. So there's a lot of people who are in hiatus from jobs. They have kids home. You know, people are traveling here during the week too. So the school, we might be able to persuade the schools to have their lots open on the weekend, but you're still going to get, you know, a lot of visitation during the week, at least right now. So then that becomes a problem. I'm wondering if there's an app for that. You know, you like login, like, like the i-coastside thing, you know, and you can look at which parking lots are full because it's kind of like close to real time, like at a movie theater parking garage.
There, there is. The thing exists.
You know, like that kind of a thing. That's, that gets into like sort of demand management schemes.
And I, my, I believe State Park has opened up all of theirs. They did it incrementally, but I believe that they opened up the Dunes parking lot and all, all parking lots were, were pretty full, I noticed. And I, I just wanted to make one more comment about the, you know, are there other parking lots that would work? And, and the mayor did talk to the school district and this is something for a variety of reasons they are not able to do. But in that same concept, and this is maybe more, not a complaint, but just an example of how these things are sometimes more challenging than, than you might believe in terms of the impact they have on different, different neighborhoods and different people in the community. Andriata Farms, which is on Kelly Avenue, has histor, has historically, this is not new, they have done it before, but it does appear that they're maybe doing it more often this year, is using their property as a parking lot and they are charging for parking. When this came up during the, about three weeks ago, when we were still in a more strict portion of the stay-in-home order, our initial ruling was going to be, they should not be doing that because the city had not opened our parking lots yet. But before we had the time to approach the Andriatis and say, hey, you should not be doing this, this is not allowed, the order changed and we opened our parking lots and the State Park opened their parking lots. And we, we thought, okay, that's now a relief. And if anything, based on comments we've heard from, from people in the neighborhoods and our theory that it's going to be one of those summers where we just have more people than normal because of what's going on, our community development department did a quick look at the use of that property and determined that that was an okay use. It's not only did we determine it's okay, but it did seem like it's another small way of taking relief off the neighborhoods. And so we've allowed that to go. Well, we have received some complaints about people who live in that neighborhood, probably specifically on Kelly Avenue, who questioned whether that's a good idea. So, so it, it is a challenging problem. We are a beach town. We have more people coming right now than we can really accommodate. They are going to park on public streets as Councilmember Reddick correctly pointed out. These are public streets and that's why the permit parking, although we will get to it and bring all the information forward, it is a fraught issue. The hard part not, is not necessarily coming up with the boundary, coming up with the fee, printing out park, parking permits, that's deciding how to enforce it. That's actually the easy part. The hard part that could, could cause this to be a longer conversation is the policy involved with public access to the beach and the use of public right-of-way. It is not a straightforward conversation.
Okay, good. And we could talk, I, I mean, just for the record, I appreciate all the, all the, I can see that we're all fired up on this. We've put a lot of time and effort into it. We'll find out. And I appreciate the comments as well from the public, but we, we, basically, we have been trying our best to try different avenues. I've also been on many conversations with the county about this. We had a direct meeting with the county supervisor about this, myself and Vice Mayor Brownstone with Robert. We've been addressing this in a lot of different ways. And yeah, I mean, unfortunately, our results are not quite there yet. I, 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 I realize, but we are doing what we can to address this in every possible way. Now, if you have ideas, please bring them forward because we are exploring every idea. So a, as future meetings come, and we can kind of talk to why some of those ideas might not work based on the factors that we've come up with. But that, that's where we currently are in the process, definitely exploring every option. So thank you. All right, let's move on to Kim Gasset Schiller.
Kim, go ahead.
You, and I appreciate the council listening to my follow-up. I've updated from my previous comments from the last meeting. And as previous speakers have said, not a lot has changed with parking in our neighborhood. And I'm still really concerned about the unhealthy, the unsafe and the bad for the environment situation that is occurring south of Francis State Beach and north of Poplar Beach. Not a lot is, has changed and based on what it was like Memorial Day weekend, I'm really, really concerned about the Fourth of July. The Friday is the holiday, so it's going to be Friday, Saturday, probably Sunday and Monday as well. It's going to, we're going to be slammed. And it's, the, the unhealthy and unsafe situation will just be insurmountable. I continue to go out twice daily and collect trash in my neighborhood. And again, I've collected enough trash that there's still almost enough room for our own weekly family trash. Part of my route includes the railroad right-of-way. And on Sunday evening, I collected a half-eaten, half-watermelon, a used diaper, partially eaten food, an abundance of plastic glass, aluminum trash, and not that far from the storm drain, which means some of it, had I not picked it up, it could have gone in the storm drain. And if it was left overnight, then the animals, the nocturnal animals would be coming and it would just be everywhere. This is unhealthy and it's bad for the environment. Also, I'm concerned about the volume of people. On Sunday, after coming home from some local errands, the block, how do I want to describe this? The one block which borders on the north is Miramontes, on the south is Correios. And on the west side of that block, just one side, there were fifteen cars. And that's just one moment in time. That's just half, one side of one block. Average, probably three people per car. That's forty-five people in that moment in time. Multiply that times the number of blocks like that and the number of days, that's a lot of people coming through our neighborhood throughout a weekend. And our neighborhood can't handle that. We have no sidewalks. We have intersections that have no stop signs. We have intersections that have two stop signs. We have intersections with four stop signs. It is going to be a nightmare on the Fourth of July weekend and I'm really, really concerned. I'm also concerned about the number of people that are going over the cliff, not knowing how to get down to the beach when they're south of Francis and north of Poplar. There's no designated, there's kind of a locals path that goes down there, but people are just going over and that's an environment, that's destroying the bluff top as well or the cliff top. So I'm really concerned about that. There's still evidence of public urination in our, on our curbs. And I'm, as I said, I'm just continuing, I'm, I'm really, really concerned, especially for the Fourth of July weekend. There needs to be more done in order to protect all of us, not just our neighborhood, but beachgoers as well from the, the, the debris that can carry the virus or any virus for that matter, the unhealthy situation, the unsafe situation that our neighborhoods don't have sidewalks. Everybody's in the street, cars are in the street, people are in the street. And that the people are climbing up and down on the, the cliffside. Thank you for your concerns regarding the health and safety and the environment. It's a serious, serious, serious issue and I'm sure not just our neighborhood, but a lot of the neighborhoods on the coast side. And it really, really needs to be addressed yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Eric Schiller, go ahead.
Hi, yes, just following up on issues of trash, mimicking what a lot of people have already eloquently said. I'd like to thank City Council for kind of their transparency and why this might be a long time to tackle. And I would like to add that this is done actually really well during the pumpkin festival and making the same policies or actions that taken place during the pumpkin festival really need to start be taken and being put into place during weekend, particularly holiday weekends. I'd also like to say that a number of people calling in admitted to picking up a lot of trash and I don't know that I really heard any of you say thank you. So let's recognize that this is not the requirement of the people in the community to do and that when people step up and take action and it's, it's important to show respect and not having good treatment of this trash is disrespectful to the community. So thank you, Sue. Thank you, Kim, for going out of UA every single day to pick up other people's responsibility. And contrary to the comments that were made earlier, part of living by the beach is not picking up other people's trash. Thanks.
No, Eric, I like your points. You're absolutely right. We should be thankful. Myself, I pick up trash every day. I know that some of the other council members do as well as we walk the beaches, part of our thing, but you're right. It's very good to thank people for doing the work and cleaning up. And so I think that was a missed opportunity. I appreciate you doing it and thank you.
Virginia Turson, go ahead.
Virginia, you're on mute still.
Talking to myself for about ten seconds. Sorry about that.
No, I'm good.
You know, in response to Robert's, you know, looking for solutions, you know, I've mentioned a few times whether or not you can expand the parking lot itself at Poplar Beach, whether you, you know, lay more gravel down. I mean, it's landfill, so if you could double or triple the size of that parking lot, that would help dramatically. And I think with respect to the trash issue, part of it is driven by so much takeout that you end up with these large containers and you've got normal-sized bins. And so I don't know if you can ask for Public Services, whether they can bring some very large debris boxes near where you have the porta-potties and just station them there because I am seeing tremendous overflow at Poplar Beach. So people are trying to put the trash somewhere, but then the birds get it and it just, it just gets all over the bluffs. And many of us who walk, you know, I see the individuals that you have hired picking up trash very nicely, you know, in groups of two and they're, you know, great to talk to. They care about what they're doing and they're doing a great job, but I think it's just an overwhelming situation where you don't have the containers to, you know, absorb the excess trash right now. So anything you can do, you know, it might just be a call to Republic that maybe you can at least temporarily solve that problem for the upcoming weekends because I think the summer is going to be brutal, the days as well as the weekends. I mean, I've even cleaned up vomit, you know, on, on mornings with a bucket and a hose and, you know, in COVID-19 environment, I don't know how, how much more disgusting anything can be than to clean up someone's vomit. So I, you know, I don't, if I don't do it, you know, and it's in an area near me, I don't know who else will do it. So, you know, we're all doing our part, but it's, it's hard and it's dangerous. Thank you.
No, it isn't. I'll, I'll thank you for cleaning that up as well. And it's true, it is hard. It, it is hard when we walk down there and see all that. What, what, just from my perspective, I'm just real quick, what I notice is like this Sunday, yes, it was, there was a lot of garbage. But what's interesting to me is we do have the big dumpster by the porta-potties. And even while the, the garbage was literally overflowing from all the stuff at Poplar and the trash cans, the dumpster was not overflowing. And we've done our best to put signs up and there are signs and I've, I've got some other ideas to try to do it, but there are signs up right by the garbage cans at Poplar, pointing and saying, if these trash cans are full, use the dumpster. And it points to where the dumpster is. And then we put another one up closer to the parking lot. And so we are trying different techniques. I agree, not all of them are working. And remember, those garbage cans didn't even exist at Poplar up top just a couple of years ago. So, I mean, we are attempting a lot of different techniques. I realize not all of them are working, but we're applying effort. We will continue to apply effort and we hear what you're saying.
I think we should get the raging grannies out here, you know, let them scare people away and express their rage at trash and bad manners. A bunch of people dressed like grandmas, you know, signs with your grandma's picture on it. Take your stuff home.
Yeah, well, I mean, you do, I, I like it. You do see that there is a, I, I don't know if you've seen the signs yet, but we, there's a, a pack it in, pack it out. Have you seen the signs now on the coast? They're in a bunch of different locations. And we did, Bob and I talked to our, our county about this in conjunction and we don't have enough time to pull it off this year right away with all the various things. But we are talking about hopefully for next year, I know that's far away, doing a whole pack it in, pack it out campaign along with the county to try to mitigate the problem. But we have to be in unison because as you would imagine, just like everything else, there are seven jurisdictions when we open the beaches. There's state parks we have to coordinate with. There's, there's this, the Mont, the GCSD, which is Granada Sanitary, which does the, the park over there. There's the Post, there's us, there's another one in, I, I don't remember all the ones now, but there's, there's seven or eight different entities that we are trying to coordinate with. The county is obviously one of them as well. And yeah, it, it's, it's quite a, it's quite a, it's quite a thing to take on a project like this, but we, we're working on it. We have ideas. Again, we will continue to work on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Hey, just one last thing. I thought Virginia brought up a really interesting point about all the
Hey, just one last thing. I thought Virginia brought up a really interesting point about all the takeout stuff. And when I hear about the actual garbage, plastic cups, this, that, you know, that's where it's coming from. So maybe we could partner with the Chamber and make sure the restaurants are giving out pack it out garbage bags to people. Cause otherwise you're just sort of like taking it into their cars. God knows where they're throwing it. And at least say, yeah, just pack it out. Bring it home, please. You know, if you find a garbage place, great. But at least it's not being scattered. At least it's all in one container, garbage container. And we can make that as part of the, you know, something physical and practical to go with the PR of it all, right?
No, it's a good idea. It's a good idea. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Was it Councilwoman Penrose?
I just think it's a great idea. That's all.
Great idea. Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I think it's a great idea. I like having ideas. No, it is a great idea. And the thing is on that topic, I mean, we were as a council trying to limit the use of plastics, which we didn't end up doing because of the COVID piece currently, but hopefully we'll get to that and make the takeout containers a little bit more environmentally friendly when the time is right. But in the meantime, a, a great way to deal with it. Very good, very good. Anything else from public forum? Do we have a few emails that we need to read?
I do. I have two emails regarding the consent calendar item for Abundant Grace. So I'll read those now. The first is from Lynette Kerthoyes. Thank you for your service to our community during this difficult time. I know that it is hard to balance all of the many priorities when sales and occupancy taxes are way down. I'm writing to express my hope that the city will find a way to continue funding the clean team. It makes me proud of our city to know that we sponsor such an excellent program to help people begin the path to rebuilding their lives and restoring their self-worth. And their hard work makes a huge difference with the large amount of trash removed from our beaches and trails. We've seen a large increase in visitors to the beaches during this pandemic, so this program is more important than ever. I strongly urge you to do whatever you can to keep this successful program going. And the next is from Rosemary Pitzinger. I'm writing to give my support to the renewal of the cleaning contract with Abundant Grace. We are extremely fortunate to have people cleaning the abundance of trash on our beaches and streets. The fact that homeless or unemployed people can make some income doing this hugely magnifies the benefits. And that concludes public comment.
All right, very good. May we move on to proclamations and presentations?
No proclamations, but we do have Claire Tutont from Mid Coast Council to give us an update on what they're doing.
Excellent. I'm always excited to hear from her.
Before I tell you what we're doing, I want to say very quickly that I was in Half Moon Bay on Sunday afternoon. At my pottery studio on Kelly, it took me two and a half hours to get home to Moss Beach. So I'm, it's really out of control. The, the, the Mid Coast Community Council has been focusing on two programs that have been in the works for a long time and are interconnected and both reaching ahead. We have formally asked the county not to take any action on either project until the end of the year to give time for the finances and the social changes and everything related to COVID to settle. They feel like they've been working on these things for a long time and are not willing to, to delay anything. So we're looking at Connect the Coast Side, which is an overview plan of transportation and land use for the mid-coast. And Half Moon Bay has a comparable project going on to complement it. We have had two public meetings on what this will entail. Primarily changes to Highway One and some land use changes. We have a final meeting for community input on the twenty-fifth of this month. Everybody's welcome. We'll focus on El Granada and Miramar. At the same time, the Board of, the Planning Commission just approved a LCP amendment, which will allow the county to build a seventy-two unit affordable housing complex in Moss Beach. Both of these projects were, are calling for major changes in traffic routing and community character in Moss Beach primarily. We have been trying to give input on this, but they went ahead and approved the amendment change at, prior to us finishing the public comment meetings. We, there are major concerns about the LCP amendment are whether or not any of this is going to be appealable to the Coastal Commission and whether inadequate environmental review will be held. We're assured that both of those things will be worked out. So that's basically where we are at this point.
That's some major stuff. Thank you so much. Okay, and Mayor's announcements of community activities and community service. So we did on Monday, we held the ribbon cutting for the new Poplar stairs. And just, I'm just so appreciative. I just want to say again, if you weren't there for listening into that speech, that is just a beautiful project and it blends in so well to our coast side. And in particular, has given people access to the beach that previously have not been able to access the beach. And a bunch of them live in the neighborhood that I live in and I've heard from them directly telling me I have never been able to touch the sand at Poplar Beach because I could not walk down. And now all of a sudden, because of these stairs, I can. So there's many reasons why I'm appreciative for those stairs. And that, that's high up there on the list, but I was, I was appreciative. Debbie Ruddock came and held one of the ribbons while we were cutting it. And I, I'm just appreciative to staff for creating such a beautiful project and enacting it. I thought, I, I, I'm so impressed with the way that came out and the way that it looks like. It's really, it looks like it's been there forever. It looks like it just blends right in. And it, it, it gives me so much pleasure to have a, a project that blends into our natural environment so much and adds such character to our coast side. So just wanted to thank staff again for that. And then the second thing is there is another get-together being organized for Juneteenth, which is this Friday. There have been many get-togethers held. I haven't usually announced them as much during city council meetings, so I'll announce this one. But it's going to be June nineteenth at the crosswalks of Ninety-two and Main on Highway One. And it's looking at about around noon right now, but it's still being organized and more information to come on that. Victoria Cormack is the person organizing it. Her email is vscormack@comcast.net. If you're interested to learn more about it and attend, and there'll be people holding up signs. And I, I believe there's other things going on in Oakland and San Francisco as well, but we wanted to have our own here in Half Moon Bay. So those are the events going on from there. And I will ask Catherine, do we have any report outs from our recent closed session meetings?
Well, I will just announce that the council did meet in closed session at five PM this evening to discuss conference with labor negotiators with its designated representatives, Lisa Lopez and Bob Nisbet to discuss negotiations with the employee organization, stationary engineers, Local Thirty-nine. The council took no reportable action at its meeting.
All right. Thank you for that. And I am on to city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have two tonight. The first will be a short update from Veronica Vostinak on our expansion of Earth Day to Earth Year and what's coming up in the month of June.
Alrighty. Thanks, Bob. I'm just gonna share my screen quickly. Alrighty. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you all tonight. I'm here today. I just wanted to give an update on our June theme for Earth Day and the challenge that goes along with it. So you might remember each month in 2020, we've decided to focus on a different sustainability-related theme. We've chosen food waste for this month. We have a lot of resources and activities surrounding that. On our website, we have, you can go, there's a link on the bottom of your screen. We have tips to regrow your produce scraps, some recipes to get you thinking in new ways about items you might other ways throw away. Food storage guides, meal planning tips. And I would also like to direct those who are interested in learning more about the subjects. The Bay Area Recycling Coalition is also focusing on food waste this month. And their website, lovefoodnotwaste.org, has a lot of really great resources as well. So I encourage people who are interested to take a look at those. And this month we are, I'm happy to announce our challenge. We're calling it All Taste No Waste. It's a food scrap recipe contest. So we're asking that people in Half Moon Bay submit recipes that highlight how to repurpose their leftovers or incorporate food scraps that might otherwise be thrown away or composted. About forty percent of the food that's produced in the US is wasted and a lot of that comes from household waste. So when we waste food, we're not just wasting food and money, but we're also wasting the energy, the water and the resources that go into producing that food. So hopefully this can get you excited to think about food in new ways. We have some inspirational recipes on the website. Thank you to Republic Services, who is providing the prize money for each of these contests. We will be able to select three winners from the contest this month and each winner will receive fifty dollars in market money that they could use for the coast side farmers market. So we just ask that you submit your entries to sustainability@hmvcity.com before July twentieth and we will announce the winners shortly after. More details are available on the website, which is linked on the screen here. So with that, here if there's any questions, and I know there's another update after as well.
Does council have any questions? So I'll, I'll quickly say, Victoria, I've looked at this. My kids are, are, are loving this and we are in. So thi, this has been very helpful and we are participating. So thank you so much for, for organizing this. I think it's great. And I appreciate you trying to figure out ways and coming up with ways to really kind of reach out and, and get this stuff going from a virtual standpoint, not our usual perspective. So I appreciate your creativity.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
I like the idea of the recipes. I'm excited to hear about some of those.
Awesome. Hopefully we can feature some of them, some of the entries we get on the website as well.
Cool. Excellent. Thank you so much for your time.
We have one more CM update from Matthew Chittister and Jill Ikus. They have some updates on activities in the downtown.
Well, Mr. Mayor, our honorable council members, glad to be with you tonight. As you know, one of your council priorities this year is on economic development and of course, recovery for our business community coming out of COVID-19 and the impacts that have come from that. And tonight I'm going to share some of the work that we're doing with the businesses and Jill will share some really positive things happening in the business community that point towards recovery. Next slide, please, Veronica. Thank you. So as you know, on June fourth, the county updated their shelter in place order with some really key changes for the business community. And that's of course allowing outdoor dining for our restaurants who had been only doing takeout and delivery throughout the shelter in place period and in-store retail, which had been limited to orders and pickups more recently. And with those changes, you know, it, it's forced us and the business community to think really creatively, creatively about, you know, how we can maximize the opportunities and get more of these businesses open, more of the workers back into the workplace and providing more opportunities for people to come, not just to the downtown, but to all of our businesses that are different shopping centers and in the downtown to start patronizing those businesses. Start spending money in Half Moon Bay, helping with our local economy and, and as I said, getting people back to work. So on June ninth, we held a, a meeting with the business community. We're appreciative of the Chamber and the Downtown Association for their help getting marketing and word out. We met with several local businesses to just talk about that order and what they were thinking and how the city could support opportunities to bring people to their businesses and start implementing the order. We did not have as many participants as we would like, but we know it's a hard time and, and many business owners are, are very busy. You know, just trying to keep their businesses afloat and, and find other ways to, to survive at this time. So a couple of takeaways from that meeting included the need for a survey of all of our businesses to get more feedback. To have the city start working on regulations for the use of our sidewalks and private parking lots and even public parking spaces for both restaurant and retail use during this time. And developing a plan for potential street closures for outdoor dining. The survey is out. It's active. Before this meeting, I was talking to staff and it sounds like we've already got about thirty responses, which is fantastic. If you own or operate a business here in Half Moon Bay, we really do want to hear from you. We want creative ideas. We want to know how much you support the different ideas that have already been presented and just thoughts on how we can help support you during this time. Our plan is to have regulations that would allow quick and easy access to the use of public sidewalks. And of course, accounting for safety of the public ADA access. There are other factors that we want to make sure are considered, but to make it really easy for businesses to start to use the sidewalks for, for eating and, and also for the retail businesses to be able to display some of their work and make it easier for customers to come and patronize their stores. Same goes for, you know, the use of parking lots and public parking spa, or private parking spaces. Is, you know, we've explored the idea of parklets in the past and we still think that there's an opportunity here, at least in the short term, for people to utilize the parking in front of their business to provide some outdoor seating because many of our businesses don't have that outdoor seating option. So we're going to continue to work on that. We, we suspect some will be kind of by right. People can just follow our regulations and do it. And others, they'll need to fill out a, a simple permit with the city and we'll, we'll create ways to really expedite that process. We're also looking at some opportunities to shut down some of the side streets off of Main Street to create almost like food courts where lots of businesses can, can simply offer takeout food and, and direct people to those areas. And there'll be tables that are spaced appropriately. There will be garbage cans, maybe potential for some ambiance, trees and lighting to, to make it a nice place to, to sit down and eat your food. And those are opportunities that haven't been out there for a while. So we're hoping this will create some vibrancy downtown, support the local businesses, but also as, as we've heard so much tonight, make sure we're being really careful and safe and, and thinking about people's health and their ability to obey the orders. So really appreciative of the support we have from the business community and, and our ability to help them. And again, if you're a local business, please take that survey. If you need access to it, just shoot me an email and I'll, I'll send you a copy of the survey so you can fill it out online. With that, I'm happy to take any questions on that aspect. Otherwise, I'll turn the time over to Jill for some of the great things happening, happening to businesses here in the community.
Good evening. Hi, Mayor Eisen and Council. It's nice to see you all. Continuing on with Matthew's presentation, I just wanted to share tonight. This community development department's lens on this is showing quite a bit of activity with permitting and development proposals that might not be readily apparent right now. So we, we just want to give you a few sneak peeks about that. To start with, hopefully you've noticed that we've had a, a couple of new businesses come into downtown. One is already permitted and open. It's a, a new restaurant. We're working on permits with, with another one. There's also some other changes afoot. We're aware of some downtown businesses changing their spaces and other vacancies are filling. So it's really dynamic and we're encouraged from watching that. I, I know that we updated you when the Coastal Commission certified the mixed-use districts and parking standards ordinance that happened in mid-May. We were absolutely delighted to report that out. Wanted to let you know that that's already bearing fruit. So we'll show you a couple just really simple pieces of a couple of proposals in a moment. But also to let you know that we've talked to a, a number of folks who are inquiring about having having residential uses come into downtown, utilizing that code for its more favorable parking requirements, et cetera. So it's got energy. And also to clarify that the urgency ordinance is fully set aside. That was the one that she worked on in December. And the new code being adopted has pushed that away and that's no longer in place. So that's just an item I wanted to clarify, because we are asked about that from time to time. So Veronica, if you could advance, thank you. So it is difficult to look at project plans without commenting on them, but we have to remind the public and of course, ourselves that this is just an FYI. These are not agenda items, but we'll just give you a quick, quick look. We do have an application moving through our process for the corner of Main and Kelly.
Yeah.
This is the site right across the street from City Hall, kitty corner from MacDutra. Veronica, go ahead and click. The little red outline shows you the L-shaped property. Next slide. And this is just a quick view of the site plan. The idea is to keep the building that's there now. Build a new building on the corner that would include about two thousand square feet of commercial active space on the ground floor, and then six residential units with a shared parking lot. Next slide. Thank you. This site is also a corner. It's the corner of Parisma and Mill. We have an initial application for this one as well. And it is also comprised of about two thousand square feet of ground floor space. In this case, this is not on Main Street, so they have options for offices, such as maybe medical office, and they're exploring what kinds of tenants would be most appropriate here. And then next slide. Their focus is then with five residential units on a second floor and to take in the architectural character of this part of downtown. So these are both in their very early stages, but we can be moving quickly because the code is in place now. And so this is really great news. This is the groundwork that you laid to make these projects come forward. Next steps in both of their processes will be for additional staff review. They both need to go to the Architectural Advisory Committee. We are absolutely delighted to have an experienced and seated Architectural Advisory Committee at this time now for this kind of activity. And then, once they are ready, they will go to public hearing before the Planning Commission. Anyone who's interested in participating in processes or reviewing downtown projects can just let us know. And Veronica, last slide for us. Just wanted also to take a moment to make sure everyone knows that the department has been fully open throughout this entire period. We've had to adjust some of the things that we can do with regards to construction as the shelter orders and the health orders have changed over time. But at this time, we're at full speed ahead here, taking building permits in. We can conduct inspections. There's protocols that we have to follow. We are doing our fieldwork with code enforcement. Our three planners are processing applications, and we are going to the Planning Commission. The Community Development Department webpage has additional information about how to get ahold of staff. And just as Matthew was saying, if anyone is interested in giving input about what should be going on downtown, of course, we hope they'll take that, a great survey that was prepared by the City Manager's Office. But if they have anything in particular pertaining to your business or a new location, please reach out to our department, to building and planning, through the Community Development Department. Thank you, and it's really nice to have some time to read these updates.
Well, Jill, and I just, I see so much of council smiling, and I just think it is great to have such a fantastic Community Development Director. It is fantastic to have such a great staff working on these projects. These are projects I think a lot of us have wanted to see. And then to have so many different pieces in place where we've got the staff for it, we've got the commission, the the commission to oversee the projects to make sure they're in character with the town, and that that's an experienced commission at this point. And then to not see that, that, the fencing right next to City Hall, right on Main Street, and see that become a beautiful project that's in character with the town is just going to be a welcome, a welcome sight. So I'm just very appreciative that you've helped direct and kind of helped make all this stuff happen. So thank you so much for all your efforts, and thank you, council, for adjusting and getting all the pieces in place. And the Architectural Committee, that's what I was trying to say earlier, for making sure that we keep with the character of Half Moon Bay along with all these projects. So it's hitting it on all ends, as usual. Thank you, staff.
I'm delighted to see what's happening in downtown, especially the housing that's part of these mixed-use developments. So I'm really thrilled and I thank Jill and our staff, and I'm looking forward to seeing these projects go forward.
I don't think that the general public understands the amount of work that has gone into the preparation for these two projects. It's not the projects, it's the groundwork that our Community Development Department has been able to lay through amendments to our LCP and through working on our parking issues and our downtown development issues, getting things in place so that then a developer can come along with a nice project like this and find it easy to see it develop. So my big thanks go out to Jill and her whole department for everything they've done.
I'm not going to pile on, but you know I could and have. And I just want to say that this is the beginning of the realization of a vision. There is a vision here, folks. There's vision in our document, there's vision in our staff. And Jill has, you know, put all the great resources into play, so just count me also as appreciative.
Staff appreciates your support. Thank you very much for working so hard in these ordinances. And of course, we can't forget to thank our Planning Commission, who toiled through.
Thank you, Jill. All right, well done, Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, finally, Jessica has a quick announcement.
I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Don't worry. Thanks, Bob. And I did want to announce that next Thursday, June 25th, at 6:00, we will be holding a live Q and A on Zoom for elections for both voters and prospective candidates. There's a lot of changes this year between district elections and then also doing things virtually. The nomination process will be virtual, including gathering signatures, and we have some ideas for that. So we're just going to hold a Q and A, and if anyone has any questions, feel free to join us. Keep an eye on our social media and next week's mayor's letter for that Zoom link, and hope to see you all there. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other city manager updates?
Nope, that is it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Move to consent calendar. Were there, yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Penrose?
Yes, I'd like to pull item 1F.
Okay, and then just real, out of curiosity, would you like to pull item 1F and do a full staff report on it and talk about it? Or would you like to pull it and just discuss it briefly?
I'd like to pull it and discuss it.
Okay, very good. Yep, when we get there, we'll do that. Yep, very good. And anyone else? And is there public comment on any items on the on the consent calendar?
There were two emailed comments on
1F, was it? And you read those already, so we're good to go. Yeah, very good, very good, very good. And then we're going to pull 1F, got that part, is there, is there? And it doesn't sound like we need a staff report directly. Is there any other items that we would like to pull as a council? Got, very good. May we entertain a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar, item 1A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances, 1B, warrants for the month of May 2020, 1C, ordinance amending Title 13 of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code by adding a new chapter 13.38 titled Sewer Charges to Implement Rate Structure Changes Recommended by the 2020 Sewer Charges Study and Related Revisions and Amending and Conforming Chapter 13.36 Now Titled Sewer Permits Second Reading. 1D, agreements with Fourleaf Incorporated for Building and Public Works Contract Services and Metropolitan Planning Group, M Group, for Planning Contract Services. Item 1E, SB1 Local Streets and Road Improvement Project List Fiscal Year 2021. Item 1G, Salary Schedule for the International Union of Operating Engineers Stationary Local 39, AFFL CIO, Represented Management Team Members and Non-Represented Employees. Item 1H, Annual Review of Public Works Contract. Period.
Very good, very good. Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Beautiful. And Jessica, would you do the honors, please?
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabat?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes, and let me just quickly say that just because we are passing these does not mean that a lot of discussion did not go into all these items. Just for the public to know as well, that discussion happens on every one of these items, although we are passing them right now. So, very good. And then may we go to 1F, and again, Councilwoman Penrose, would you like to just make a comment?
Yes.
Need some, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I pulled the item tonight because of its subject matter, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a new professional services agreement with abundant grace for coastal cleanup services in the amount of sixty-five thousand. In the SAF report, it itemizes how we have last year had a contract with them for eighty thousand dollars. It also talks about the amount of work that they did and the success of that operation. I think everybody has been very, very pleased with it. In light of what's going on right now with COVID, what's happening in our neighborhoods, what's happening on our beaches with the unhealthy conditions that trash and refuse have brought to our town, I would like to see us amend that resolution and reinstate the eighty thousand. I don't want to see fewer coastal cleanup workers. I don't want to see less trash picked up at a time when we're having inordinate amounts of trash piling up already. So I'd like to see us go back to the eighty thousand.
All right, well, let's discuss that. Very good, very good. Why, why is it, real quick, because I don't quite understand it from the staff report entirely, why is it that we decided to change it from eighty-five to sixty?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that question. The idea here was in the spirit of our approach to bringing forward the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. And the principles by which we went by, given the financial challenges that we have, was that we would not leave a stone unturned. We made sure there were no sacred cows, and we proposed cuts across the board. So it was in that spirit, as we made cuts to personnel, as we made cuts to all departments, as we made cuts to contracts, as we made cuts to supplies and materials. From a staff perspective, we thought the right thing to do was to try to be as equitable and spread those cuts across the board. We completely appreciate the comments Councilmember Penrose just made, given the circumstances, and understand why she pulled it in the discussion you're about to have. But that was, that was the principle by which we put this together. If the council moves tonight to go back to eighty thousand, we will find a way to pay for that within the budget that's before you tonight.
No, that makes sense. There's a lot of, there's a lot of lot of, lot of, lot of budget looking at, and I'm glad you left no stone unturned. So I follow that perspective, and I'll be curious to get council's perspective on it. But based on that, I can easily support the sixty-five thousand based on the fact that we took cuts to literally every other piece of our organization. So let me hear what the rest of council has to say.
Unless unless anyone disagrees, I'm ready to make a motion right now.
I disagree. I agree with Councilmember Penrose's idea to restore the cuts that were in the staff report.
Okay. And Debbie, where do you want to fall on this?
Well, I'm willing to go to eighty thousand dollars. I wonder, like, what does that equate to? Is that like another day of three people? Or is it the same number of days doing, you know, more streets? I mean, they're doing it like three days, sixty-five thousand dollars. So I don't even think it's a full day, but I'm certainly happy to support it. You know, if they have the staff and can make use of it, I'm in favor of it. There's need.
My personal perspective, and I'm happy to vote on it, but, you know, from my perspective, we need to stay disciplined financially. I feel like there's opportunity to add money to so many different budget items that are near and dear to all of our hearts. If we start doing it to this one, then there's the next one, and the next one, we've all taken hits. Everything's taken hits. I feel like we don't have money to support everything the way we did before. I understand this is a valuable program. I understand what it does. But I also believe that we should be consistent with our cut across the board. I'm totally okay being overruled on that. That is my perspective. Boom.
Robert?
Okay. Well, I would like to move that we adopt a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a new professional service agreement with abundant grace for coastal cleanup services in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second bet.
Okay. Jessica?
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhabat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
It's a good question. I need a minute to think about this. Again, got to support the program. You love what it does. On the other hand, we have so many budgetary concerns. It is a tough one. I feel like I need to support staff's recommendation on this one. I'm voting no.
Can motion carries for one?
All right, very good. All right, moving on to item number two, which is ordinances and public hearings. Item 2A is a resolution assessing the levy for the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2020-21.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I will try to be brief with this. This is just a follow-up to a discussion we had a month ago. This is the Half Moon Bay Hotel Business Improvement District annual levy discussion. So really quick, by way of background, just for context, as we know, TOT is our highest revenue source. That's the tax that we charge to visitors to hotels. And it's really important that we maintain that revenue and that our hotels are busy and people are coming to visit the coast side, which then pays for many of the services that we're able to provide to our community. In 2004, the city working with the hotel community created the Hotel Business Improvement District, which is created under state law. And it levies one dollar per room per night at every hotel initially within Half Moon Bay in 2017. And it levies $1 per room per night at every hotel initially within Half Moon Bay. In 2017, it was expanded to the entire coast side. And then that money is used to promote lodging at hotels within the city and the coast side to administer marketing programs that increase overnight lodging and fund other BID-related activities. And the Chamber of Commerce is designated as a managing agency. So the hotels collect the fees, they remit those to the city, and then the city allocates those funds to the chamber to spend on the agreed-upon expenditures. On May 21st, we had a meeting where we got the annual report from the BID group. And they made a funding request, which we are supporting to, to enhance their activities. And we also, your council set the public hearing for tonight, which is a requirement of this process to continue the levy. And so tonight we are proposing to continue the levy as, as is with the same boundaries and the same hotels as in the past and the same $1 per room per night. And over the last several weeks, there's been an opportunity for anybody within that district to issue a protest. We send letters to all of the members of the BID and advertise in the paper to allow that process to happen. As far as I'm aware, Jessica, city clerk, we have not received any written protests at this point. And so our recommendations to conduct a public hearing and hear any additional public comment, consider any written protests, which again, at this point, we have none, and then adopt a resolution assessing the levy for Half Moon Bay, the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement District for the coming fiscal year. Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any clarifying questions from council on this topic? Do we have any, I'm sorry, did I move too quick? No. Do we have any public comment on this topic?
I have none.
Okay, very good. Uh, may, may we entertain a motion?
Do we need to open and close the public hearing, Jessica?
Very good. Thank you so much. Very good. Uh, I would like to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public?
I show none.
Okay, very good. Boom. I would like to close. It's weird not having the gavel to be able to do it right. I would like to close the public hearing at this point. Now, oh, go ahead. Sorry. Yep, please.
Yeah, okay. I move that we adopt a resolution assessing the levy for the Half Moon Bay Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2020 through 21.
Do we have a second? Perfect. Excellent. Thank you. And then Jessica?
Uh, Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. And then ordinance, thank you, Matthew. And the ordinance in public hearing for item number two is the adjustment to the cost of services scheduled user fees for full year 2020, 2021, item 2B.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here tonight to present the adjustment to the cost of services schedule, which you might also know as our master fee schedule. And let me just get, share my screen. Sorry. So tonight I'm going to go fairly at a good pace to talk, to talk about this and we'll go through the background. We will review the purpose and scope. We will talk about the recommendations and next steps. And then we'll open it for public hearing to get any comments or feedback from the public in regards to the changes that we are suggesting. So in way of background, in 2017, the city council adopted a comprehensive update that actually was in accordance with state law. And in 2019, last year, there were significant adjustments made to development review, to the development review fee structure, including cost recovery and fees and deposits. Most of the fees, as you see on the slide, were at 100% cost recovery. The update today that we are proposing is not a change to the city council cost recovery goals set in 2017, but instead is the, is to ensure that the fee and deposit levels remain consistent with the fee study as well as with the actual city cost to conduct review and inspections of the various types of permits, as well as all the other items that we're looking at today. So to begin, are, one of the things we are proposing tonight is the Poplar Beach parking fees. Currently, excuse me. Currently, we, we are charging an hour, an hourly basis to a maximum of $10 or $15, depending on the size of the vehicle. We have researched with other beach communities who, that are also addressing parking. We've also looked at state parks and how they operate and what they charge for their parking. And currently, while we do offer a permit for Half Moon Bay residents, we're also changing the structure of that permit so that residents can actually get a additional benefit without enduring a full 12-month cost. So some of the changes we're making in vehicles less than 20 feet in length will be charged a flat rate of $10 per a 12-hour 12-hour length, sorry. That's no overnight parking and basically between midnight and 5:00 AM, while we won't physically close the parking lot, no one will be allowed to park there. Horse trailers and vehicles larger than 20 feet will be charged a flat rate of $15 per 12 hours. Again, no overnight parking. The annual 12-month permit, which is for Half Moon Bay residents only, will increase from $103 to $165 and will run from January through December. And the new process that we're adding is to establish a nine-month permit for residents of Half Moon Bay, which exclude peak summer months. And this will run from September through May and it will have a cost of $90. The next thing we are looking at is the Parks and Recreation Department and adjusting fees that we incur in result of the facility rentals. One of the things we're looking at is the security deposits so that they act, right now, I believe the security deposits are included, but they're actually not at a rate that we would get, get back any of the monies we lose in case of any cause of damage or anything else that might happen when the rental is going on. The other thing we're looking at, and as you all know, the kitchen has been completely remodeled. It actually is now a working fantastic kitchen that is available to people who are renting the room, the Grand Oak Room. And so we are now adding fees in regards to also renting the kitchen in addition to the rooms. And of course, you know, in consideration was the extensive renovations that we did this year. Also, one of the things we're thinking of adding is staff fees. And this is obviously due to the impacts of COVID-19 on the city budget. Staffing levels for recreation services have been reduced. So in order to keep progressing with our rentals and allow private rentals, we are trying to think of a way to recoup, recoup charges that we may incur for staff and part-time staff to cover those, those events, private events. And also in terms of public safety, we revisited all the codes and fines that were affiliated with any of the citations that the sheriff's departments may issue and tried to bring them up to standards that follow the San Mateo County Sheriff guidelines. So in addition, we also looked in community development. And although in 2019, numerous updates were made to a lot of the fees in regards to the permits, we had a few this year that needed to be revised. One was, one was minor permits, which actually includes the permits for simple re-roofing projects. When researching this, we found that some of the projects did not, we're trying to be responsive to contractor feedback and they didn't raise to the level of other projects that determined a much higher cost of a permit when working on a construction permit, project, excuse me. We also looked at accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and we tried to incorporate fees for the made, measured de-allocation as well as development impact fees. Jill is available in case you have any specific questions to those fees that were raised in the process. Just some universal thing, of course, one of the major things we do each year is we do a CPI adjustment to all the fees. For permit fees, we use CPI and for development or developer impact fees, we use the construction cost index. The CPI this year is 2.5%. Next steps after tonight, we have a 60-day waiting period until August 15th, or we'll do additional notification to make sure that people are aware these fees are increasing. And of course, tonight's recommendation, once we, is to conduct a public hearing, get feedback, and then by resolution authorize the adjustment to the cost of services scheduled user fees for the next fiscal year 2020, 2021. And that is my presentation. I apologize that kind of zoomed through that, but we do have staff available for very specific questions. And I'd like to take a moment to thank Cory Stalker for helping me with this report. It was quite a task to undertake at the same time as doing all the other things we're working on. So I really appreciate the assistance.
Excellent. And we'll open it up to council first before we open up the public hearing for any clarifying questions.
Yeah, so um, I think it looks pretty good and it's a vast amount of work and I really appreciate it. It's important to recover our costs. Two things concerned me a bit. One, quite a bit, and that is the doubling of the photocopy costs from 11 cents to 25 cents a page. I'd like to know like what thinking went into that because I'm guessing since most of our big documents, you know, people can just get the whole thing already printed, but I'm guessing it affects the public record act request activity mostly, but I'm not sure if you can confirm that one. And then I'm a little bit concerned of, about the the new fee for professional dog walkers. I, I think they need to, you know, have a business license or whatever it is, but um, and I don't have a dog, so I'll say that. But I just happen to know that it's already very expensive to walk a dog. Like if you work and you can't walk your dog and you hire somebody, you know, you're not going to have an hour walk, it's really expensive. And I'm guessing a $200 fee, you know, they might bump, bump it up even more. So I'm just wondering, I guess, what would the right fee be? But I'm happy to hear your, you know, explanation about that. But the rest of it makes a lot of sense to me. I think most of them are relatively modest increases. I see the logic of it. So I just have those two things.
Well, the first question, the photocopying, we actually gauged on what we average a cost per copy. And we actually found that most of our PRA requests are done electronically. So it's very rare that people will request or receive a hard copy of a PRA request. So we did take that into consideration when we discussed it. I think we, when we really tried to figure out how many hard copies had gone out, we realized actually to recover any cost, if any large documents are asked for hard copy, based on the cost of our copying going up, we were trying to gauge what it would cost if we did have to kind of do a large document. But from what I understand, and Jessica, you can correct me if I'm wrong, most of our PRA's are done through electronic media.
That is correct. We, it's been a long time since we've had a paper request. I actually can't remember the last one. It's been a few years since we've responded to a PRA via hard copy.
And with the professional dog walker, I may ask John Doty to, to help me with this answer since we worked on this together. But we were trying to model after a few other cities that have enacted this to help balance the fact that when we have somebody that has a large amount of animals with them, there's a cost the city incurs in terms of cleanup, in terms of space, keeping up the paths, everything that we actually incur when the a large amount and large, you know, large group of animals like that actually on a daily basis is using our, our paths. Or we're trying to develop a way to actually not only recoup some of that cost, but also monitor and gauge in terms of allowable amount of animals and how many we can have there. And you also notice there's also a charge for personal dog walking, which I believe is three to six. And I believe, there he is, John. There was additional research that John did as well that kind of went into that, the thinking behind this fee.
So I'll, I'll, I'll tag on, this is something that actually Bob and I and had been talking about as we've been out roaming around the beach, Smithfield. And this carries over from some work that obviously they had done at East Bay Parks. But we keep kind of seeing this as a pretty common occurrence in terms of the registration and getting some, some management. The issue that we're really trying to get to, one is obviously is to be cost recovery. And I, while I under, we all understand that $200 is $200, you know, spread out over a year and spread out over the number of dogs that some, that folks are walking. We think it's a, you know, it's a, it's a relatively small price to pay for, for, you know, for the effort. It's going to cost us more than that still to manage and, and deal with. But the bigger issue and the biggest reason why we're here is that we have a regular lease, are seeing people with seven, eight, nine, you know, dogs on leashes and some off-leashes. There is no way those folks are controlling those animals. They're on the beaches, they're in park, they're in Smithfield, they're at Poplar times. And we're honestly very concerned about the, the, the safety of others around them. And frankly, we, we just, there's no way you can control those animals. They're not your dogs. They're not on your commands. You're walking them as a, as a job and as a profession, and that's what you're doing and dealing with it. So that's really the, the, the basis for starting that conversation. The fee is whatever the council chooses to set. You have set as a standard roughly, you know, 100% where we can and where it's reasonable recovery. What I can, what I can assure you is $200 is, is, is probably not even at 100% recovery. But that's a choice. What we're really trying to achieve is to come forward with the regulations, then address how many dogs one can walk at a time, what kind of control they have to have and kind of those issues. So we were just trying to get out of, knowing that you're going to come back and see regulations that will more closely and clearly illuminate what we're trying to get to and, and the issues out there.
Okay, I'm persuaded. You've demonstrated there's a public good to this. And I'm persuaded of the public good itself because I've seen it. I've seen many dogs and a lot of times they're off-leash, just running around like at wave crashing. But I think that's bad. So um, yeah, so you, so you motivate those who want to be in the business and it gives us some, some resources to monitor. I, I think we should be out there just checking once in a while. Our community knows, office, whatever it is called now. Yeah, so I, I concur on that one. Still a little bit wondering if the 25 cents per page is disincentive, but I'd like to hear some other.
I will, I, I'll jump into that one only to say that I cannot remember the last time we actually charged someone for a copy. It's not something we typically do. It's kind of on a rare occurrence in which someone is maybe asking for a lot of copying. And it's kind of like, okay, if you really want this, if you're really unwilling to go to the library and we're going to have to stand there and copy this document and deal with it. And it doesn't fall under a norm. and it doesn't fall under a normal PRA request or where, you know, there's an exception to the charging. You know, it's kind of one of those, okay. This is what it costs us to copy and it's not including my or somebody else's time to actually stand there and copy it for them. Um, so I, I, I will only say that, but I, I can't remember in the last two or three years, um, anybody coming around, um, when, um, um, and we actually charged this because we recognized that there's more cost to running a receipt and doing that deal if it is a small amount of money than there is. So we're, we, we get that idea that sometimes you just don't charge it because it'll cost you more to actually charge it than not.
Well, now that John is giving away all our secrets.
Well, that, that's good. I'd like to hear like stuff like that. That's, that's good customer service. Thank you.
Well, and I think part of it also is encouraging people, if possible, to go the electronic route. Um, you know, the less paper circulating out there, the better. Um, but as John said, even though he's giving away all our financial secrets, is that we would never not give somebody something due to them not being able to pay 25 cents a copy.
Good work, staff. I'm sold.
Good. No, I'm glad we're asking the questions. My, uh, are there, are there any other clarifying questions on this topic before we open it up to the public? So I have, I have one that, that's come up a couple of times from different people in, in the community. Um, just trying to understand, and, and I know Bob, we've talked about this, so let's just get this in public record more or less. But just what, what's the, what's the thought process behind the, um, no overnight parking at Poplar and the, we're doing it for 12 hours and then midnight to 5:00 AM? And can you just explain like, why is it that it's 12 hours? And then we've got the midnight to 5:00 AM. Why aren't we just saying one flat rate? Or it's good for every six hours and then you have to renew it? Uh, and I know we've kind of discussed all that stuff, but I need to get it into, into public comment.
Sure, I can go first on that and then John can jump in. Um, because this is something that we rolled around quite a bit to try to thread the needle and get it just right. Um, but on, on the flat fee all day, uh, obviously we have a concern that we are not promoting camping in our parking lot. The idea is not for someone to pay $10 and then be able to park their RV and, um, essentially, uh, camp in our parking lot. Um, so we determined that, um, at certain times of the year, the sun does come up before six o'clock and so we thought, um, 12 to five seemed like the right time to, to make it, um, to prohibit parking in the parking lot. Uh, those are the hours where, um, you would be camping essentially. But we could imagine someone wanting to get there at five o'clock to see the sunrise and walk on the beach. Um, the, we tried opening the gate this past winter and, or leaving the gate open at night. The idea being that it takes work to open and close the gate and we wanted to keep it open. Um, uh, A, to promote people using it and not parking in the parking lot. But also, uh, we thought that it would also be a way for us to, uh, contain, uh, the people that are violating the night hours and, and down on the beach late at night and partying if they're parking in the lot and the sheriff has to take certain action, they can always close the gate and then one by one, um, take care of each person who's parking there. Uh, so that was the, the thinking there. So 12 hours. Uh, Kate, we define that as a, as a day. You get a flat rate that most people are going to get all day out of that. But if they come at, um, say six o'clock at night, even though it's, it's technically good for 12 hours because the parking lot closes at midnight, they're only going to get six hours out of it. We would like to be able to leave the gate open, but still enforce that people are not allowed to camp in the parking lot. John, and you want to add anything to that? Any nuances?
Um, primarily our, our, the overnight, um, was really about oversized vehicles. Um, you know, we, we recognize that people will, you know, likely go out there. There's people who fish late night to kind of deal with it. Um, the, the, what we were really looking at applying that to was large vehicles. We didn't really want again to have the RVs, the large trailers, folks, you know, even folks that are on the road coming, you know, and, you know, wanting to, to pull over and, and deal with to come out there because we knew this was just going to lead to problems and issues. Um, including with the neighborhood, but also with the coastal commission to some extent about, um, resetting and re-establishing, I, I use that, that isn't currently permitted. So, uh, that was a thought process. Um, the thought process on the flat fee piece was, um, was simply to, to tie in and go directly to what the, the state parks are doing. Uh, one of the concerns that we had was that if we were doing the hourly basis, social media says, hey, they'll, you can only get charged $2 an hour and if you only want to go a couple of hours and you only have $4, go there instead of going to the state parks. We don't want to discourage folks from going to the state parks. We've heard earlier conversations during public comment period, we've heard them over the time and we hear them, um, each, each and every summer, um, about the concerns about Poplar and Poplar being too popular. Um, we felt that the, that the hourly rate and the hourly parking deal was creating a situation in which we would become more popular or were becoming more popular because of the flexibility it offered and less money.
No, I guess, uh, two, so two parts then. Why is it that we're doing, why aren't we just saying you can park flat fee? And why, why the 12 hours piece? Why don't we just say it's closed from midnight to 5:00 AM? Period, I guess, is the, is, is I guess more of the.
Well, oh, it, it, it's, uh, Mayor, it's, it's just the issue of we're, you know, our, we have been talking about and basically have kind of, I think, come to the conclusion that it's better to leave the parking lot open and not have to manage opening and closing that and, and, and dealing with that. And frankly, this goes also to the issue of the beach is open 24 hours a day. People will go to the beach 24 hours a day. Is it better to have them in the parking lot? Or is it better to have them in the neighborhood? I, I think we've sort of turned the corner with the community in the neighborhood out there that says, let's try keeping them in the parking lot rather than in the neighborhood, knowing that they're going to come. The idea ultimate, you know, with, with the 12 o'clock, um, to five is sort of, hey, you know, my parents always said nothing good happens after midnight. I think that follows suit with, uh, with Poplar and the idea being is, hey, um, we're, we're enforcing up to that point. It's really closed. We'll notice it is closed. You can be cited for parking there from 12 to 5:00. Um, and if there comes a problem or whatever, the other side of enforcement side is if they're having a problem, they're having an issue and the gates open, it's simple for the sheriff's office to close the gate and then sort of round out the folks who are, um, maybe having a nice bonfire party and kind of dealing with it. And they don't run away very easily when they can't get their car out because the gates close. So there, there's a whole sort of nice way to approach this issue. And again, I know we were talking about policing tonight and I don't think, no one is talking about doing any, anything other than, um, trying to keep peace in the neighborhood and, and, and keep kids from, in particular, from drinking and driving, um, anytime and underage drinking and driving in particular, but anyone drinking and driving in that tends to be the late, late night, um, activities. And then you have really good people who just want to go out for a late evening and watch the, you know, watch the stars.
No, all good, all good. As long as, as long as we're not putting too much pressure on Saul's team to, uh, to do the ticketing. Um, so I appreciate the fact that we're going to get more money, uh, from this because we obviously were, were in need. So I, I like that aspect of it. Um, and then my only other question on the money side, sorry to take the time up, but why are we not, I, and I kind of know the answer already. Why are we not charging more? Like, I, I realize we match with the state's doing at this point at $10, but my take is if we charged even $20, we would still be filled. And, and I realize that that's probably greedy, but I'm just curious to get your perspective on it.
Well, um, staff actually spoke quite about this at length and, and, um, and we spoke to Jill and Jill works closely with the coastal commission staff. We have met, I've met with them at times and clearly one of their concerns is affordability of coming to the coast side. That's one of their issues. It's a big issue, um, that, that they have. We have the state parks charging the $10 flat rate, which are the, which are primarily the access points for people to the coast up and down, at least for the central and, and, and northern coast. So we, we landed on, uh, matching that because we, uh, felt that CCC, the coastal commission had, had pretty much concurred that that price point was okay. And so that's why we were there. And it is consistent with what we were already pricing at, which was the $2, uh, for up to five hours and setting it at $10. So we're, we're holding steady, you know, on that. Um, could we charge more perhaps? Could we, if we charged more, could we, um, have a visit from, and, and have to answer to the coastal commission perhaps? Um, so, uh, that, that was our, that was, that was, um, our recommendation just to hold with what seems to be an acceptable, um, and affordable level, um, of cost. Um, and, um, you know, historically, you know, that parking, um, that parking lot has generated upwards of $80,000 a year to, to, um, to the general fund. It, it more than pays for itself in terms of the, the equipment itself. And, um, I, I just, since I have this, this, uh, uh, second, we are just for the record, working on a touch, the, the touchless, uh, access with an app and dealing with that for the COVID-related issues and stuff, um, that you asked for as a council. Um, so we are working on that. We had a little, a few technical glitches, but we are working through those and, um, and we'll be, um, putting those forth as well.
Good. It'll be worth it for them to pay extra for that. So that's perfect. I'm excited. It's all coming together. Um, uh, let me see, any other questions from the council before I open it up to the public? All right, Mayor, open the public hearing on the adjustments to cost of services scheduled user fees. Are there any comments?
Yeah, we have one. Uh, Virginia, go ahead.
Um, nobody answered my question the last time with respect to expanding the size of the lot at Poplar. So that's the first point. Second point is, I'd like to discuss, I, I'm a little worried about the fixed fee structure. A fixed fee structure could result in an additional burden on local no-fee residential parking. I've observed that many vehicles park for shorter durations of under four hours because I'll see them when I go on my walk and an hour later I see coming back from my walk that some people are coming in in the morning. Some people are leaving. Did you consider perhaps $3 an hour, up to a maximum of $20 for all day for regular-sized vehicles? And $4 an hour up to 25 for oversized? Because, you know, if you haven't looked at the average actual fees paid historically, just looking at what the state charges at $10, you know, there's not as close a residential aspect that you're, that you have as a counterbalance here. So if the fee is too high, if people are just coming to do a two-hour, an hour short walk, then you're going to drive them back into the neighborhoods. And, you know, the weekends are fine. You'll always be full and I assume that most people pay on an honor system. But I think you will disincentivize people who come during the week for an hour to two to three hours with their kids, but they're not there all day. And so then $10, you know, becomes burdensome for people, particularly since it's been $2. So if you increased it by a dollar an hour, you solve coastal commission issues of affordability. And it's just more palatable to people if they're staying for under four hours. Um, so that's my point. Um, and, you know, the parking lot open late, I think may be an issue for some people that are closer to that area in terms of noise and, and whatnot, because the police are down there a lot on the weekend nights, um, as is. Um, so that's it. Thank you.
Yeah. And let, let me quickly before I open it up to staff, but I mean, we were, we do know, we have the statistics on what you talked about. The average length of stay is about two hours, uh, in that parking lot. It might change for the worse. You might be right. It might change for the better. We thought we'd recruit more money this way, so it's not just matching the state. Uh, we looked at all the different fee structures. Um, so there was a lot that went into it. We can adjust if it doesn't work. Um, but it wasn't just matching. There was many thought processes that went in and all that staff talked to that. Uh, and the second part is, I agree that there may be the possibility that, you know, the whole object was when we closed the gates before everybody parked in the neighborhoods and then went to the beach. And then as they came back, they made a lot of noise. And, you know, as they got back into their cars and there was all this ruckus and noise and there was a lot of complaining from the neighbors. So we were trying to keep that energy more towards the beach, which is the purpose of keeping the gates open. Again, if that doesn't work, we can adjust. But we are, are, these are both attempts to adjust to current problems. And again, we could be creating unforeseen problems or other problems from it. But, uh, you know, you got to take some stabs, try different, different options. Uh, some of the things, we see how this works, we see how the other thing works, and then we can adjust and find the middle ground. And I'll let staff respond as well if you want to on that one.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just a quick que, a quick answer on the other question. The parking lot cannot be expanded. It has been studied and there is environmentally sensitive habitat surrounding the parking lot. So that has been looked at as part of the, uh, Poplar gateway design and it cannot be expanded.
You, you also cannot build a parking lot right now on top of the landfill, which one, we don't own, but two is having issues, um, of its own from the closure. So that's not an option as well.
But these are all good things to consider. I like the, I like the perspective, you know, to come up with different ideas.
So can I, um, you know, the, the answer, the, the answer is that there is no good answer. Um, frankly, when it comes to this issue, um, you can, you can price to try to get people to turn, you know, one of the questions is, do we want people to turn over quickly at the parking lot? You know, that's a pricing strategy that you, that you look at if we don't want people to stay all day and deal with that. Um, so there's a pricing strategy that comes with that. Um, you know, where, where are we trying to go? We, we've provided an opportunity for, for years now and we continue that with, um, with the passes. So the annual or the nine-month pass for, for residents. And basically when you look at either of those passes, you're looking at virtually one payment's worth, um, a month for a month, per month for that year that you get for that permit. Um, so it's a pretty darn good deal. I understand people were paying $2 an hour under the, under the current scenario. But even when you look at it from that perspective, it's a pretty good deal if you visit Poplar quite often. Um, but there is no right or wrong answer as we see it. Uh, you know, we have, there is an alternative that would put back, um, hourly rates. Um, and, um, and we could certainly walk you through what that could look like. But if there's not an interest on the council to even want to go there, try this out, then we'll leave it alone and just go to the flat rate structure.
Well, plus these are to enforce and we talked about all the different pieces. So I think we try it and then we can adjust if it doesn't work.
Yeah, I mean, don't we want to also make sure that, uh, one of the reasons for increasing the price was to make sure that people weren't just all piling on Poplar Beach instead of going to the state parks, right? So we want to sort of have a flat rate across the coast, um, so that we don't incentivize one over the other.
Well, again, we'll see, we'll see. Uh, I appreciate the comments. I'm going to, are there any other public comment? Good. I will close the public comment session, uh, section. Uh, council, anything else you would like to discuss on this topic? I'm good too. Uh, may we entertain a motion?
Yeah, I look at that. We authorize adjustments to the cost of services schedule, user fees for fiscal, fiscal year 2020 to 21.
Uh, Jessica, will you kindly go around?
Yes. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Councilmember Rorback?
Yes.
Councilmember Robert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brownstone?
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Chair Eisen?
Yes.
Motion.
Excellent. And then I am curious, does council need a break before we move on to resolutions to staff reports or can we continue onward?
I would like a break.
Uh, is 10 minutes too little or five minutes? What do you want?
Uh, how about eight minutes?
All right, it's 10:02, 10:10.
Can you put the screen back?
Good. Very good. All right, here we go. Resolutions and staff reports. Item 3A, Agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Amendment 12.
Does that look okay?
Beautiful. We, we can see it.
Okay. Everyone ready?
Yes.
So this is, this presentation is on the 12th amendment for the sheriff's contract. So this is obviously related to the study session we had earlier. I will go through some of the terms of the contract and take questions and public input. So we, the city entered into a contract with the county sheriff back in June of 2011. So we are now nine years into this contract arrangement with the county sheriff. At that time, the city had its own police department and RFP was put out. The city of Pacifica actually submitted a proposal, as did the county sheriff. And the city elected to go with the county sheriff. And the initial contract budget that was signed on June 7, 2011, was an 18% decrease over the city police budget at that time. My understanding is that the city was looking for options for better police service and more cost-effective service, and that's why this option was explored. So that 18% decrease translated to a savings of $510,000 in the first year of the contract. Moving forward, nine years into the contract, my estimation is that the ongoing savings is probably over $750,000 per year if the city were to provide like service. And I would even go further to say it could even be over $1 million once we start to talk about some of those bonus services that were mentioned during the study session that I will get into in a second. So that first contract was for five years. It had two, three-year extensions. The first-year extension took the city till 2019. And then in 2019, last year, we entered into another three-year extension that takes us through June 30, 2022. As was noted at the study session, even though it's a three-year contract, we do come back to the council each and every year at the last June meeting, the last meeting of the fiscal year. And this is to amend the contract for cost of living increases that the sheriff has. So as you can see, since it was implemented in 2011, there's already been 11 amendments. That's because it comes forward every year. And there's also been a couple other amendments during that time. So this year was unique in terms of the process. Each year, the sheriff sends, sends the city a proposal in March for the cost of living increase. We then have a series of back and forth with the sheriff and bring it forward at this meeting. That first proposal from the sheriff came in at March 27, which is about 10 days after the stay-at-home order started and that pandemic really hit us, started hitting us hard. Over the course of the next month, month and a half, obviously a lot happened with the pandemic. The hotels went into lockdown. We went into a stage of a kind of a mini-financial crisis as we put together a plan to close out this fiscal year and also look at how we would deal with next fiscal year if the projections for hotel revenue, sales tax revenue, other revenues stayed low. So during that time, conversations got back to the sheriff. I will have to commend Saul. He was the first one to go back to his superiors in the sheriff's office. And he informed them that, you know, the city of Half Moon Bay was experiencing some severe challenges. Our hotels were closed. We weren't making TOT. And at that time, the decision had been made to go into furloughs and lay off the six employees. That led to a conversation with the undersheriff and they then amended their proposal and sent us a new proposal on May 5 for the amount you see, just over 3 million. So as you can see, between March 27 and May 5, they did drop their proposal for their cost of living increase to 3 million. And they did that really to be sympathetic to the situation that we found ourselves in, to be a good partner. And they did that quite, quite frankly, by sharpening their pencil and making cuts to all line items of the budget. One could certainly ask, well, how did they find a way to cut 400,000 without cutting the service level? They did make cuts to all areas. So they cut some labor expenses. They were able to cut the benefits that they apply to their various personnel. They did cut back on overtime. We had a special budget for special events. That was cut back, other miscellaneous items. So it was kind of an across-the-board approach they took to cut the proposal by 400,000. As, as noted here, that's a 12% decrease over the March 27. We were very appreciative of that. And we had our final meeting, I think in late May, to consummate the agreement. I will note there still is 355,000 allocated for overtime. That, that is a pretty substantial number. If you equate that to their hourly rate, that comes out to a probably one full-time equivalent employee for the, for an entire year. So it is, you know, a nice allocation. And we've talked about this during the study session. We also talked about it when we talked about the beach challenges that we have right now. That this is something that the city is there for the city to use and decisions are made between myself and staff and Saul on when to employ the extra overtime. And as we indicated during the summer months, he's gone into a program where he's actually adding two deputies on the weekends, for example. The point was made earlier by Councilmember Riddick quite, quite correctly that if you look at the contract, there's not a lot of fluff there. 85% of the contract is personnel costs, 85%. The other 15% is administration, training, equipment, their vehicle expenses, supplies and materials, et cetera. But that equates to about 11 full-time employees. And I just want to make the point here, it's really important to make that quite frequently when we're asked, well, how many deputies? What, what's the service level on an average day? How many deputies are out doing their job on an average day? And the answer is two. On average, it's not perfect. During, during the, say, hours between maybe 2 o'clock and 6 o'clock in the morning, they may go down to one. But on average, it's two. But you have to remember, that's 24/7. It takes eight deputies just to do two, two people 24/7. So eight of that 10.86 is deputies that make up the two, two deputies that are always out in the field. So I just wanted to make that point to, to show what we are, what we are getting for our money. And it comes down primarily to the two deputies that are, that are out in the field. This is just a look at the last three year or the last two years and one year looking forward. In 2018, 2019, the contract was 2.6 million. Last year, 2019, 20, it was actually a 12.2% increase to 2.9 million.
Hey, Bob?
Yes.
I don't know if the council's seeing it. We're not seeing, some of us are not seeing it advance at all. We're still on your own slide.
Yeah. Oh, there we go. I can see it now.
Okay. Wrong screen, sorry. So you weren't seeing it advanced. My apologies. So here's the, the part I went over. 18% decrease in the first year, 510,000 savings. We estimate 750. And we're in a three-year extension to 2022. This was the point I made about the sheriff submitting their initial proposal for 3.4 million and then resubmitted, given the situation at 3 million. And that was making a series of cuts, a 12% decrease over their initial proposal. And as I mentioned, the 85% of the contract is personnel costs, about 11 employees. So here we are, caught back up again. I just wanted to show three years, two years going back, one year going forward. 2018, 19, 2.6 million. 19, 20, this year that we're just ending 2.9 million. It was actually a 12.2% increase. And then based on the sheriff making their cuts and giving us a proposal that was affordable, the actual increase is only 3.1% looking forward to 2020, 2021. So I want to talk about the service we get and what we refer to as the service gap. So this came up last year, I believe, for the first time. And this phenomenon is caused by service levels between the incorporate, between Half Moon Bay and the unincorporated areas. This is actually a huge benefit, one of the benefits of contracting with the sheriff. The entire coast side is one unit. There's not a separate unit for the city and a separate unit for the coast side. They operated as one unit at the sheriff's office. That, that was the huge benefit and the economy of scale, I think, that really allowed the city to make this change. Because the deputies that serve the coast side will come and serve the city and the deputies that serve the city will go serve the coast side if they need to. They don't necess, we have deputies that are assigned to the city and there's deputies that are not assigned to the city. But when they have to do, go out to calls and respond, they don't necessarily respect the boundaries. When the contract was initially put together, they, they, the, the county and the city got together and attempted to estimate what the spillover would be back and forth to come to the contract amount. After nine years, it's been determined that we actually are getting quite a good benefit because more often than not, deputies that are assigned to unincorporated county on the coast side unit, Moss Beach, Montero, have to come into the city for calls. Then deputies in the city have to go outside the city for calls. Same thing for the sergeants, same thing for investigators. So this service gap that we call, this benefit to the city, this essentially free service that we're getting is estimated at 666,000 annually. We made a commitment last year, the council did with the amendment last year, to start moving towards covering that gap. So last year, 150,000 was applied to the gap and we made the commitment that in future years, we would slowly cover the gap. So the amount you're seeing, the proposal of 3 million, it actually includes another 162,000 towards that gap. So on, on the one hand, the sheriff was very sympathetic to the fiscal challenges we had this year. On the other hand, we are still doing our part to make up the gap in service. But here we are, we're about halfway through the gap and so we're still getting a benefit from deputies who serve the county, who, who are paid in the county and that we end up not paying for. I'll also go and say the same thing about Saul and he can certainly testify to this. Our contract pays for 50% of Saul's time, 50% of a captain. But clearly, through Saul's own experience and observation, he spends more than 50% of his time on city business than he does unincorporated. So that also isn't a part of the service gap. This concept also came up during the budget hearings and so I wanted to put a slide in on this. There's a phenomenon that we call the balancing account. The county calls it a trust account. It's not actually called out in the contract. There's not a section that calls it out. This may be something when the subcommittee gets into their work and we do any revisions, this is something that probably should be looked at and maybe can be solidified a little bit. But this phenomenon is caused by mainly the overtime. To the extent the overtime is allocated, we then set our payments to the county. But if we don't use all the overtime, it then goes into this account. Each year, the county balances how much we're billed versus how much was budgeted. And historically, over the nine years of the contract, there's been some funding left over. We, we didn't use all the overtime or we didn't use all the services that were budgeted. That has slowly built up over time and as you can see, was up to over 1.1 million as of June 30, 2019. In the year and a half I got here, I, I had knowledge of this account. And the thought was, and, and the, the history was that when certain uses would come up that were police-related, maybe they needed new equipment. Maybe we needed even more overtime or, or something special for the pumpkin festival. Or we were also thinking about starting to maybe do renovations to the substation, which are the city's responsibilities, that we would use this balancing account. But as the council knows from the budget hearings, we were in stressful times. And part of our plan to submit a balanced budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021 involved requesting that the county send this money back to us. This is the city's money. It's, it was just held by them. And it was never in policy that it would only be for police services. So our recommendation this year was to bring that money back as part of our balancing of the budget, given, given the tough times we're in. And so we'll essentially deplete that account this year. And I, again, I think it's an area that the subcommittee should look at for the future. But that was the, seemed to be the initial intent, that that would be available for extra, extra police services as needed. But for this year, we needed the money. And then this was brought up in the study session as well. I think this is really important just to underscore again. There are additional services. They're, they're not line items in the budget. The, the budget amendment that's before you shows exactly all the line items that make up the $3 million. There's no line item for the PERC, for the PERC team. There's no line item for this, for the school resources that are supplied, et cetera. So this is an interesting conversation and Saul can certainly speak to this. But it really gets to some of the comments we heard, some of the conversation that we're all hearing nationally. Not so much about defund the police. I mean, some people are on that extreme. But a lot of people are talking about what that means to them is reallocation of resources. Realocating resources so the right people are doing the right jobs. So that mental health individuals are, are serving as mental health advocates. So that homeless people, advocates are dealing with homeless issues. So drug counts, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And the interesting thing, since we're a contract city, while that conversation may be happening at the state level and the county level, because we get these benefits already, our contract amount's not going to change. If San Mateo County does have budget cuts themselves, they'll have to make decisions about what they cut. And if they were to cut any of these programs, that would, that would be to our detriment. Because again, we're receiving these already. So again, it's a bigger conversation and, and we can see it happening and we're a part of it. And that whole conversation about police reform is going to continue to happen. But for us right now, these are kind of the facts in front of us in terms of what we get for the contract. And these are just bonus services that are obviously very important services that we receive. So I'll let Saul comment at the end if there's any questions on this slide, but I'm almost done. In fact, I am. Questions? And then our recommendation, of course, is to proceed with amendment number 12 to the agreement for just over 3 million. And then, as was discussed earlier, the council directed to form a subcommittee. And the main purpose of that subcommittee is to take a deeper dive over the next fiscal year on the services we get from the sheriff, the contract. Everything is fair game. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. And again, Sal can respond. Uh, so with that, I'll open it up to questions. And again, Sal can respond if there's any further questions about, um, the additional services they provide.
Um, Bob, a very straightforward question. The service gap you had on the slide. As six hundred and sixty thousand annually, but then you're sort of. So that's. So the, the county is absorbing the, the bulk of that where, is that correct?
Uh, that's right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that is correct. Again, the coast side, the coast side is treated as one unit in their budget. And so over time, they have just, based on, um, the time cards and the experience of the deputies. Have been able to calculate how much time the sergeant spends in the city versus how much time the sergeant, for example, spends in unincorporated. Our contract is only paying for a quarter of a sergeant. Um, and so over time, we just didn't know that at the beginning of the contract. We, we made, I think people made educated guesses at that time. And so, uh, yeah, this is a, this is a pure benefit to the city. Uh, we've been receiving that service. Um, but it's being absorbed by the, by the county's sheriff's budget.
And Bob, if I may at this point, mayor and, uh, council, just to elaborate and. Uh, talk about some more numbers. I think the six hundred and sixty-six thousand is very conservative. Uh, just on the mere fact that on the four sergeant positions that are called out in the line item budget for this year. Uh, you know, it, it's about a hundred and seventy-six thousand for four sergeant positions. The actual cost of those sergeants, it comes out to roughly about one point five million for the coast side. And I can, uh, definitely, uh, share with the group that. The sergeants spend more than fifty percent of their time dealing with city issues. Um, the other, the other thing that we called out prior to the three-year renewal in the presentation to Bob and Matthew and, um. I forgot who else was in the room. We called out the detective, uh, position. Which currently, and it hasn't changed, the city pays about eleven percent, point eleven percent of one FTE detective position. And we were able to determine that, uh, last year, uh, during last year's budget. The detective, uh, position was used close to eighty-six percent or ninety percent of the time. For city business. So you can see the gaps, uh, do increase as we start putting numbers to it. Uh, as you recall in my last annual report, I also identified the calls for service on the entire coast side. Uh, they were pretty much split down the middle. City of Half Moon Bay had about, uh. Twelve thousand, one sixty-seven calls for service that we handled and the rest of the coast side, all other, um, half a dozen communities. Uh, had, uh, around the same amount, twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-three. And I have four deputies on the unincorporated areas that al- also come in and help out. Uh, when calls for service actually start stacking up or getting backlogged. When the, the only two deputies assigned to each shift, uh, are overwhelmed. So that is why you constantly see a lot of patrol vehicles within the city limits. One, we hold our briefings in Half Moon Bay and if there's traffic enforcement to be done. Prior to them going to the unincorporated areas, they end up doing that enforcement. So you're getting that bonus patrol. Uh, if anybody has questions on the slide that Bob had mentioned in regards to all the other units that are complimentary. Uh, I'm more than happy to just do a very quick overview of all of them. So in the special operations section, if you wish.
Uh, if I could just back up, where did that a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars that, uh, is being proposed to, uh. Go to the service cap? Where did that come from?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Rabeck, I'll take that. So in the six hundred and sixty-six thousand. They actually, the county's also broken it down. What portion of that gap is the deputies? What portion is the detective and what portion is the sergeants? And so when we were looking at, um, um, how, you know, our, our incremental. Built, you know, taking the gap down, that, that number, as I recall. Completed, completed the gap on the sergeants. And so the logic from the financial officer on the sheriff's side was. I, I said, well, you know, we could probably do one fifty again, but by going one sixty-two, we, we completed the gap. On a portion that just made it logical and I guess easier for her from an accounting perspective.
And, and in the future, this gap will continue to be as large as it is, most likely. Is that right?
Well, our, our commit, our commitment was to try to get the gap down within three years. I would say, given the circumstances and the crisis we faced this year. Uh, I think it's going to take us four years. We're about halfway through the gap after two years. And so I think if we, I think our, our proposal to the sheriff going into next year and the year after will be that we, we really need a couple, two more years to. To complete, to completely get to six hundred and sixty-six.
Uh, I guess that's what, I, I hate to sound like a broken record, but the, it's not an annual six sixty-six. It's a, it's a total, if I understand correctly.
No, it's annual. Once, once we, once we agreed to the one fifty last year. That's included, that one fifty is included as the, in, in the three million dollar contract for this year.
I understand. But when you talk about getting the gap down. The only way to get the gap down, if I understand correctly, is to pay the six sixty-six. Is that?
Right. That's, that's correct. So to completely get the gap down, we could have in year, last year, increased the contract by six sixty-six. But we said, we can't, we just can't afford to do that. We recognize there's a gap, but you need to give us some time so that it's not a big jump in year one. And so that was when we went on, when they agreed to do it on a three-year kind of payment plan, if you will.
I, I'll talk to you offline. This is not productive. Thanks.
Let, let's, let's clarify this real quick. I, I appreciate the question. So the, the gap is six sixty-six annually. Meaning like every year, we're going to be down six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, right? We are paying a hundred and fifty towards it, which means that in the first year, we're going to be, let's just call it five hundred thousand dollars underneath it.
Right.
And we ramp up over four years. I guess what Harvey's trying to ask is where, who's absorbing that five hundred thousand dollars?
Well, currently the, the county sheriff is.
Exactly.
They budget for the whole coast side unit and their contract, our contract with them just becomes revenue to them. And it goes into the big county general fund pie at the end. Um, so they're absorbing it. Um, their budget is paid for, um, but that's certain, we're, we're receiving the benefit of the service.
But, but in four years, we will be.
Correct.
And so, so we are, we are, I, I guess, I hate to say it like this, but benefiting temporarily for the next couple of years. For, by, by, by contracting through the county, by paying, let's just say, five hundred thousand dollars less next year. Maybe four hundred and fifty the following year, three hundred the next year, blah, blah, blah. Does that help at all, Harvey?
Yes, I, I got it.
Good questions. Good questions. Anybody else?
I'm good. I'm ready for.
Do you have a public comment?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Deborah. Yes, is there a public comment?
I actually do have one emailed comment. Uh, this is from Chris Wissard. I am in strong opposition for the city to renew the three million dollar contract with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. When we disbanded our local police force in two thousand nine, it was because of the financial difficulty the city was facing due to the Beachwood fiasco. Since then, the city has come out of the red and is still enjoying the surplus in spite of the current situation. When we had a local police department, we had officers that lived in our community, knew many of us by name. Knew the culture and felt the pulse of our town. The police were regarded as fellow citizens there to help us if needed in our very low crime city. The ever more visual, present and aggressive militarized sheriff's department is not needed in our town. From coming in to swarm jaywalkers to dressing up like combat troops with guns at the pumpkin festival. To patrolling the beaches and mini tanks giving out tickets, this kind of policing only raises fear and escalates situations. A study in twenty seventeen showed that police who use military equipment are more likely to have violent encounters with the public. I sent two letters to the council regarding this matter before the entire nation started the briefing police tactics. After my first letter, a drunken distraught woman reaching for a gun was shot dead by the sheriffs. Who forgot to activate their body cameras. This was the second mentally unbalanced woman the sheriffs have unnecessarily killed in our city. After my second letter, I observed six, yes, six sheriff's SUVs with lights flashing. Breaking up a fight between a couple of farm workers. During the initial stages of the COVID lockdown, sheriffs were ominously parked everywhere. Nine times out of ten, when traffic is backed up. It is because two or more sheriffs have pulled someone over. And I observe it is usually a young male Latino in an old car. I would like to see Half Moon Bay go the route of the rest of the nation. And have our own police department with smaller, less aggressive looking vehicles who would be trained in how to handle domestic disputes. As well as guard the health, safety, sense of belonging and citizenship within our community. Including dealing with people who are experiencing mental crisis. I don't have any hands raised, so I believe that concludes public comment for this item.
Excellent. Counsel?
Um, I'd like to push back on the idea that when we had a local police department, uh, everything was good. I've talked to many people who thought that there was a lot of cronyism and, uh, favoritism. And, you know, if you knew the right person, you'd get good service and if you didn't, uh, you'd get hassled. So it's not obvious to me that having a local police department in and of itself is a good thing. I think as Bob has pointed out, we got a very good deal from the, uh, sheriff's, uh, department. Uh, the idea of defunding our police. How would you do that? Okay, what are we paying for? Essentially, we're paying for. Two deputies on average at any time. And that's it. And if you, you think that we shouldn't have two deputies here, then maybe you could go along with the idea of defunding. But to me, that's the minimum of what we need to have, uh, available to us to deal with. Uh, all our issues that, uh, come up. So, um. I think we have a good deal with the sheriff's office, uh, sheriff's department and I'm in favor of keeping the current contract.
Very good, very good. Uh, other council members? I, I just want to weigh in on what, what Harvey.
I think Debbie, Debbie had her hand up.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I can't see Debbie. Please, I, yeah, this, this format.
Yeah, no worries.
So we now have a, a council subcommittee, um, that's going to be looking very closely at our. Uh, ways of policing and, uh, our budget and our contract. Um, we're going to be looking at, you know, sort of. Potentially changing the balance between paying for policing and investing in the community. Uh, but, you know, we're still going to have to prevent lawlessness and investigate violent crimes. Um, there's a lot of armed people out there. We're going to need armed responders as it is. And I, I hear only more calls from more police from residents. You know, if people want fewer police, then people should call the police less, you know? Don't, don't call them for, for, for everything. Maybe there's other people to call. Checking in with neighbors, but, um, you know, we, we can't not approve a contract for the police. And we're not going to change things overnight, so I'm going to support the contract for those reasons.
I, um, you know, I agree with the comments both from, um. Harvey and Debbie tonight. And I think that we've seen also all the extra services that we get by contracting. With the county sheriffs, um, that we wouldn't have otherwise because we're not a full-service city. Um, and yes, we have a subcommittee that'll be working on all the issues that we paid a lot of attention to tonight. And I think it's also important to remember that, you know, this is a. You know, it's a county sheriff's department. It's not like the rest of the county is not going to be looking at all these issues that were raised tonight in the city. They'll be paying a lot of attention across the county in terms of all the cities that are included. Menlo Park and Redwood City and. Citizens there have many similar issues and had protests. So I imagine that, um. You know, be working, that all the cities will be working closely with, um, the sheriff's department to address the concerns that were raised tonight. We're not alone in this.
Very good. And I'm, let me just see, I can't see if Deborah's got her hand up or not. Deborah, you good on this?
Yes, I agree with all the comments that the other council members have made. I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute amendment number twelve. To the agreement for law enforcement services with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Second. Uh, and Jessica?
Council member, Rabeck?
Yes.
Council member, uh, Penrose?
Yes.
Council member Reddit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, and I, I just want to finish off by saying, I, I, I am very happy that we're having a, uh, a, a subcommittee on this topic. I'm very happy that we're going to have another meeting with the public on this topic. Um, this particular time period, just to be very clear. Is, uh, we are approving, uh, the budget for something that was already negotiated. Earlier on and it's just moving this contract forward. This is not a budget negotiation. This is the approval of something that was already a, a, a part of the contract. Uh, so I just want to be clear and the budget negotiation does not happen for yet, what, I think another year. Um, until we enter into a new contract. So just want to be clear, uh, as this, as this is being done. Uh, and we appreciate, um, what Saul and his team are doing, um, and, uh, for joining us again tonight. And thank you for, uh, listening to the public and helping us make the changes, uh, that need to be made to keep our city healthy and safe. Um, and, uh, and prosperous and in, in a, in a way that everybody feels comfortable.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Thank you.
Stated.
Very good. Very good. I'm moving on to item three B, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one recommended budget. And again, um, just be very clear and I'm sure this is going to be talked about, but this is the second time we will be seeing this item. Um, we talked about it during our last council meeting in great depth. And we've talked about it back and forth behind the scenes as everybody's kind of done their little pieces, uh, to, to, to make it work. But I'm looking forward to this topic. Again, this is item three B fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one recommended budget.
Thank you, Mayor Eisen and council members. And, um, we were actually looking very much forward to this item as well. Um, tonight I am bringing you the final draft of the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Before I start to go through, um, my slides, I'd actually like to take a moment to thank. Um, the finance team for all the work they've done. You know, it took me a moment, but I had to stop and remind myself that this team that put together this budget is all brand new. And so Kenneth Stiles, Brian Lopez, Maggie Rodriguez and Julissa Acosta. Were very key players and had big parts in putting together this budget. Um, and again. Um, and again, I think we all started around early October. So it's quite an accomplishment for us to be able to bring you this budget and have it be something that we're very proud of. So just to go through some um reminders of what we've actually been through in the last few months. Um, first, you know, we went through the timeline that you see now. That included listening sessions, a strategic planning workshop, um, a few finance committees, study sessions, last meeting, we reviewed the proposed budget. And tonight, June 16th, we're actually bringing you the budget for formal adoption. Some of the significant bu- budget changes that I wanted to just reiterate were some of the operational expenditures that we brought to you included the decreased use of consultants in departments. Um, personnel expenditures, we agreed to a 10% furlough. And um, we also had a layoff of six positions, actually five filled positions and one vacancy. We also, in the next year, are taking on new debt service with the purchase of A80 Stonehenge, which is actually going to be something that's quite beneficial for our city as we start the process in building our own courtyard. Some of the other things we did to help balance the budget was we asked for authority to use the pension reserve to make our pension payment this year. It saved 959,000 for the general fund. Um, but we already have started mapping out plans to repay that in the future years as we start going through our, as we start going through future fiscal years. Um, also, we did come to a conclusion that we would have to dip into our general fund reserves to supplement the budget. Um, and we've actually found, though, with the change, which I will show you in future slides, that we are looking now at only using 632,000 of the reserves as opposed to the 1.2 we brought last, last session. For our capital projects, we folk, we folk shifted focus to sewer and grant funded projects. Um, and of course, unfortunately, with some of these budget cuts do come impacted service levels. And we showed where maintenance services, building inspection, and some of our known programs were going to have to be canceled this year due to some of the budget, budget cuts that we had scheduled. On a more positive side, we were still continuing to reach out and being assistance to the community by supporting the nonprofit grant program. Um, we also are continuing our sustainability events. Um, we're continuing with the town center update and other capital projects will also continue in fiscal year 2021. The total CIP budget is actually 10 million with 950,000 being generally, general fund funded. So here's just a quick refresher of the general fund summary. Um, and as you can see, our surplus or our deficit is now down to 632,000. And that is the amount of reserves we're predicting to use. Here is our general fund balance, um, which just gives you a little bit more detail. And we went through this last meeting. If you have any questions, uh, Ken is on the line to answer anything that may have come up between last meeting and now. Um.
And Lisa, I'll just note, note that the major difference in this table between now and two weeks ago is we did incorporate um the deferral of the library loan payment. So that was directed last time. The draft budget the council saw two weeks ago didn't reflect that yet. The recommended budget tonight reflects not having to pay 580,000 to the county this year. So that, that basically had the impact of, of filling the reserves as you see. And then you can see the unassigned fund balance of just over 400,000 at the bottom. That was due to the not having to pay the library loan this year.
Thank you, Bob. Something else that we included in this year's effort to put together our budget was we actually include, started a join the conversation, which gave residents an opportunity to engage with us, to tell us about their thoughts about our government, our programming, and things that they felt the community needed. Um, and so it was a very big project to undertake in terms of community engagement. And it was very important to us to make sure that we actually got feedback from the population so that when we are moving forward with our budget, we can actually make recommendations to council that fit what the city population wants. Um, one of the top priorities that came out of that was, of course, emergency preparedness. Um, and of course, that is actually one of your council, council priorities. So it fits along lines of what the population would like to see the city assisting them with. And then also through the join the conversation engagement, the community has identified additional local recovery and relief priorities, which include preparing for medical or catastrophe emergency, keeping public places healthy, safe and clean, maintaining the city's financial stability through the recovery, maintaining nine, 911 emergency response times, supporting local businesses, families and residents through our local recovery, and keeping Half Moon Bay affordable for all the classifications that you see here that, you know, we would love to see call Half Moon Bay home. And I'm not sure if, if Jessica or Bob or Matthew would like to add anything um in regards to join the conversation. So tonight, we come to you um to ask for the final recommend, final approval. And that would include a multiple resolutions. The first would be to establish the GAN appropriation limit, which is included in the budget. Approve the city's review of the investment policy. Um, this year, we have no changes to it, so we are carrying over last year's investment policy. And finally, adopt the fiscal year 2020-21 annual operating budget and the fiscal year 2020-21 capital budget.
Very good. Thank you for that great presentation and really thank you. This, it's been quite a go around between coronavirus, TOT funds, sales tax, all the different ways that we had to get this budget done, moved through. Uh, you guys have just done a great job adjusting and moving and all, you know, this is not the easiest year to come up with a budget. And obviously, making cuts is not easy as well. We had to do that kind of across the board to make everything work. So just extreme amounts of appreciation to get to this point. Uh, so thank you for all that work, Lisa and your team in particular. Um, and we've seen this quite a bit at council and we've already discussed this. So I'm not even sure if there's going to be that many questions, but are there any questions on this particular item at this point? And I can't see everybody quite just to make sure, but I think that's not, and there's no question. So I'm just going to open it for public comment. Is there a public comment? Oh, I'm so sorry. Did I miss something?
I don't show any public comment, Mayor.
Public comment, yeah, yeah. No public comment. Um, are we ready to uh entertain a motion?
I move that we approve resolutions to establish the GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 2021. That we approve the city's review of the investment policy, no changes for fiscal year 2021. And that we adopt the fiscal year 2021 annual operating budget and the fiscal year 2021 capital budget.
Second.
Excellent. Uh, and Jessica, we do the honors. Thank you.
Councilmember Reddick?
Aye.
Councilmember Penrose?
Aye.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Mayor Eisen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, congratulations. Well done. I, I think we, that deserves a round of applause. It's uh quite an accomplishment. Well done, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, and commission and committee updates?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if Matthew is not on, he did have a park and rec commission meeting, uh, but it doesn't look like he has an update, so we have none. He, there he is.
Oh. Happy to give an update. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. I believe it was our first virtual park and rec commission meeting and first meeting for over two months. So Matthew, how did it go?
Yeah. Yes. So we, we decided, although we had suspended those meetings uh in light of COVID, that it was time to just do a check in, um, get our commission together, have some conversations. And I think most importantly, just talk about the future of recreation here as we start to reopen. Um, our hope is to, uh, with the changes to the, the county orders to allow um some of our recreation programming to commence uh this summer. Um, it'll, it'll be limited because it'll be limited to the classes that uh, that are smaller and can have physical distancing and not share equipment. Um, we're hoping to do some outs, some things outdoors. And uh, it, it's great to have a commission to be able to help us think through some of that and how we can best serve the community. Uh, we also had the Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Rec report out on their efforts with uh the Coastside Gibbs Campaign. And we're working with them on an MOU to just better establish a relationship between ourselves and the Friends and uh what expectations we have from them and, and what things we can do to support them. So um, still moving things forward. It was great to meet with them and I believe we're going to meet at the end of July as well. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks for keeping that moving. Uh, Councilwoman Reddick, or Penrose, looks like she's got, yeah.
You're on mute.
Okay, I think you're on mute, yeah.
The community garden, sorry.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Any update on the community garden and the Johnson house?
Uh, not a lot has moved forward. Um, and air and uh, and our member of the commission that's uh leading the charge on that uh has some things in her personal life that are going to keep her busy here for a little while. Um, but our hope is that they can complete some of their planning and we can get the agreement finalized. That uh hopefully as things reopen and people can get out there, they can start working. So I would suspect um this summer is when we'll see things move forward.
Thank you.
Great question. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to move on to uh future discussion, possible agenda items. Uh, hearing done, I will move on to city council reports.
Uh, I'll be very brief. I went to the A-BAG General Assembly uh meeting. There were like 200 people on the call. Uh, the upshot is that we're going to increase the dues that cities uh have to pay to A-BAG. Um, there was a lot of uh discussion about that, but it finally passed. But nothing substantive really happened, unfortunately.
All right. Thank you for that update. Thank you for attending.
Sure.
Anyone else? Excellent. Well, it is 11, let's see, well, I can't even see anyone, 11:03. Congratulations. We are adjourning the meeting. Uh, started at 5 o'clock, finished at 11. Well done, everybody. Thank you for your time and energy. And uh, if we do not see you sooner, we will see you in a month. Enjoy your break.